Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, November 26, 2018. Because we did go into recess from our committee of the whole meeting, and we had an executive session that went a little bit beyond our normal six o'clock start here for a city council, so I do appreciate your patience in waiting for the group to get together here. Prior to our roll call tonight, I would remind folks to feel very, very free to speak to any item, not only those items that may be on the agenda for tonight, but also there is a place on our agenda tonight where folks can speak to any item that is not on the agenda. And we certainly welcome citizen input on an ongoing basis. And if you do, if you would like to speak, and I have several of those forms already tonight from folks who will fill them out, they are in the back for you, please fill them out, give them to our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, she'll get them to you, and we'll get you on in the proper order. Having called the meeting to order, I'd ask our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, to call the roll, please.
Jacobson, Finnegan.
Here.
Marquart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Norrico.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
Just for the benefit of those in the audience and those watching at home on TV, Alderman Jacobson will not be with us tonight, Dave's on vacation, and has indicated that he would not be with us tonight. We will move on now to Item B, under Pledge of Allegiance, and has been the case each and every council meeting, we have a police officer, usually our police officer on duty, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But we thought it might be appropriate tonight that we make that switch and have a fireman lead us in the pledge of allegiance, our police chief, Eric Hicks.
(laughing).
When they say "police chief," our fire chief, Eric Hicks.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, moving right along on the agenda, Item Number C, approval of the agenda, and I understand there may be some additions or deletions or changes. Ray?
Mr. Mayor, if I could suggest one change to the agenda. Currently, Item G5, Ordinance 2018-085, Adopting Chapter 37 Tax Increment Financing Regulations. If it would please the council, I'd recommend moving that up to what would now be Item G2, which would precede other TIP discussions on the agenda.
So we would move G5, Ordinance 2018-085, Adopting Chapter 37 Tax Increment Financing Regulations, to become Item Number 2, under Items for Separate Action, that would be G2. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
And then G, what is now listed as G2 would go to G3, and we would follow suit. Okay? Any other corrections or additions? I would move for an approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Marquart. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven I.
Motion is approved as amended. The agenda is approved as amended. Okay, Item D, Public Hearing. We're going to open the public hearing, 2018 Annual Property Tax Levy, and we're opening this public hearing at 6:29. Speaking of this item is our interim city manager, Ray Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public hearing to approve the proposed property tax levy increase for the city of DeKalb, which was noticed in the November 17 edition of the Daily Chronicle. The proposed corporate and special purpose property taxes to be levied for the city of DeKalb for tax year 2018 payable in 2019 are listed not to exceed $8,592,566. The estimated property taxes to be levied for debt service and public building commission leases for tax year 2018 payable in 2019 are not to exceed $5,492,838. I should point out that ultimately, the vast majority of that number is abated, with the exception of $494,117 for library debt service. The estimated total property taxes to be levied for 2018 are $14,085,403. Again, this is a not-to-exceed number. Later in the meeting, we'll bring the actual property tax levy before council for discussion and decision, and those numbers are anticipated to be lower than these, these are provided as a ceiling. With that, I would open it up to any public discussion on this.
Yes, we do have a public discussion. Mark Charvat.
I'm a little frightened of what I think is going to happen with the tax levy, once it's discussed earlier. There was a very interesting discussion recently on the part of the city council in reference to the tax levy, where I think a reasonable amount was to be levied. I believe the original discussion, when the council finished debating this, referred to keeping the actual dollars levied nearly the same, capturing the new growth. But with the latest budget shortfalls, I'm afraid of what is going to happen to the property tax levy. I would encourage the council to keep to what you originally discussed, and keep the levy at its current dollar amount for each individual household, as opposed to trying to capture the growth in EAV, which we talked about earlier, 4.03 percent. Let's not do that, let's keep what we talked about, keeping the dollar amount the same, capturing the new growth and the new growth only. Let's not tax the residents of this town to death. Property taxes have gone up every single year, while our EAVs have either stayed flat or have gone down. Now that they're going up, we're supposed to actually keep the rate, I should say, keep the dollar amount the same. Let's not try to sneak a fast one in on the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any comments from city council on the public hearing tonight? If not, do you have anything further, Ray?
No, Mr. Mayor, that is all.
Okay. At this point with no other public comment, we will close the 2018 Annual Property Tax Levy Public Hearing at 6:31. Moving on now to Item E, Special Items or Presentations and Citizens' Comments. The first special item, I'm going to leave Ray Munch up there at the podium, he is going to recognize and congratulate our fire chief, Fire Chief Eric Hicks, for over 29 years of service to the city of DeKalb on the occasion of his retirement. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Chief Eric Hicks has served the city of DeKalb and the DeKalb community for the past 30 years. Chief Hicks began his fire service career when he was hired by the city as a probationary firefighter in 1989. He worked his way through the ranks of the fire department, and was appointed Fire Chief in 2012. Over these 30 years, Chief Hicks has faced countless challenges and opportunities, all of which he has met with extreme professionalism and selflessness. Those who have worked with Chief Hicks can likely point to any number of defining moments in his career, but the one example I am most familiar with is Chief's role as one of the first public safety personnel to arrive on the scene of the NIU Cole Hall shooting in 2008. I've had several conversations with Chief Hicks about that day. It's clear that it had a profound impact on him, not just as a person, but in how he viewed the responsibility this city has to protect its citizens. I've only had the pleasure of working with Chief Hicks for a short time, but it's clear to me that he is not only a great leader, but a selfless public servant. These two qualities became apparent this summer when we learned that the city is facing significant fiscal challenges. The city manager's office asked each department head to carefully evaluate potential budget balancing measures for their departments, and Chief Hicks took that challenge to heart. The fire department's budget balancing proposals represented the most well-thought-out and comprehensive package of any department. To be frank, Chief Hicks laid it all on the line. As I turned the pages in Chief's proposal, I reached one page in particular that gave me great pause. Chief Hicks had proposed the elimination of the deputy chief of operations position within the department. Upon reading the full proposal, it was clear Chief Hicks was willing to fall on the sword for the sake of the department. He later confirmed that, if needed, he was willing to retire so that the city could promote him within the ranks and eliminate one deputy chief position. As that scenario has now come to bear, we should all recognize the countless sacrifices that Chief Hicks has made for the city over the course of 30 years. Whether it be the birthdays, holidays, and family events that he missed out on when working 24-hour shifts, or the selfless act of stepping aside for the greater good of the city, Chief Hicks has placed the citizens of this city ahead of himself. While his departure from the fire department will have a profound impact, we can all rest assured that among the many places Chief Hicks has succeeded is in preparing his department for the future. Chief Hicks leaves the department in many capable hands, I am confident that in the coming weeks, the next leader of the department will rise to the surface. When that happens, we will once again be able to thank Chief Hicks for his leadership and countless contributions to the men and women of the DeKalb Fire Department and the citizens of DeKalb. Chief Hicks, on behalf of the city of DeKalb, I thank you and your family for your service and dedication, and wish you all the best in this next chapter of life. I really want to thank the citizens of DeKalb for allowing me to serve them for the last 29 years and 11 months, it's been a great ride, but couldn't have done it without these guys out here, so, want to say thanks.
As we see a number of the firefighters, people who have served with you, under your command, with you, I see our two assistant chiefs, Jim Zarek and Jeff McMaster. And Eric, you know, when I was over to the fire station number one the other day, and a little cake and coffee, I said something that was from the heart, and that is that you are rock solid. I've never seen you too high or too low. And Ray, what you just said about this guy falling on the sword, very, very few people in this community know. And I would encourage you, Ray, to consider sending that as a letter to the editor, because I think that really says so much about this man and where we are tonight. So once again, I'd like everyone to join me in giving another standing ovation for our fire chief, Eric Hicks. (applause) As Eric is getting a round of hugs from his fellow firefighters in the back, I'd like to move on now to a proudly DeKalb item, Operation Warm, presented by the city of DeKalb firefighter Noah Millard and Amy Fontana of the DeKalb Classroom Teachers Association. Noah, how you doing?
Very good, very good, Mayor. Wait for these guys.
Sure.
Number one, thank you, Mayor. Reached out to Chief Hicks about this, we are very proud of what we have done, but I'd like to say, council, staff, and most importantly, residents of the city of DeKalb. Five years ago, the DeKalb firefighters, as well as the DeKalb classroom teachers, identified a need in our community, and that need was for coats for kids in our community and the schools. This year, the DeKalb firefighters and DeKalb Classroom Teachers Association set out to reach a lofty goal of giving away 120 coats to kids right here in our school district. We were joined, we joined forces with Operation Warm. Operation Warm's mission is very simple and clear, they provide new coats to children in need. Their vision, along with that, of the DeKalb firefighters and the DeKalb classroom teachers, is that every child wearing a new coat feels valued and is empowered to get to school and gain an education. Operation Warm has grown to the point where we have been able to gain and create new relationships within our community with other like-minded organizations. Behind me, I have some of those members of those organizations, I'd like to recognize them. From Thriving Financial, we have Sean Blobom and Dustin Miller, from right here in our community, and then everybody, I believe, knows Mr. Lehan, he does a little bit of everything, but-
How do you spell that name?
(laughing) But he represents the Knights of Columbus, and they have been very generous in helping us push to the next step. I said earlier, we set a lofty goal of 120. We were able to do 121 coats this year to kids in this community. We are very proud of that. The guys that are standing in the back of the room, along with the chiefs, are a big part of that as well. We would not be able to do that without these guys going out, talking to their neighbors, talking to the community members about these different things that we do. And lastly, I'll finish on this, as I scroll through some pictures here that I forgot to scroll through. But we, as DeKalb firefighters, believe that, no different than going out on the call and those emergency responses, is our obligation to this community, but as well as that is to do these type of charitable adventures and get into things. And when we do it, sometimes, we like to jump into the shallow end headfirst and hope for the best, and this is one of those things where we've been able to give away 500 coats in the last five years to kids in this community. So, without that, I'll scroll through the pictures that you guys can look at and see, but we appreciate the recognition tonight.
Thank you, Noah, I appreciate it. Thank you, fellas, we have a comment here, Alderman Finnegan.
I do, you know, Operation Warm was just one of the things that they've done here in November. A week and a half ago, let's talk turkey, how many turkeys did the firefighters deliver?
The firefighters delivered over 1,000 pounds of turkey, as well as a $500 donation to the pantry.
And I didn't want that to go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.[1121.58][1121.58](applause)
Just one more reason that we are proudly DeKalb. Now move on to, moving on to presentations, Elder Care Services FY 2018 Human Services Funding Annual Report by its executive director, Tara Russo. Tara?
Thank you very much. I come in here tonight and I wanted to talk about our agency, how it's been growing with the community every year, and this year is no different. We saw higher numbers in FY 18, and our programs have expanded, and grants such as the human services grant through the city of DeKalb, as well as our CDBG grant, helps us with our programs. We do have a contract with the Illinois Department on Aging for many of our programs, but typically, those funds are never quite enough, so we get local grants from the community, and the city of DeKalb has been so gracious to be able to help us every year with that. We have a lot of programs, and I could go through all of them, but one actually, I was bringing up tonight, which is kind of timely, is our Self-Neglect and Vulnerable Adult Program. And honestly, this program has been going on for about 11 years, and for about 10 of those years, it was an unfunded program, no money at all coming into it. But we found there was a need in our community, in DeKalb, as well as some of the other towns in DeKalb County. But I have worked, and my staff has worked closely, in particular with the city of DeKalb, with the fire chief, Eric Hicks, and other fire chiefs, on this program, because what we do with the Self-Neglect and Vulnerable Adult Program is we deal with a lot of high 911 utilizers. And what that means is, we'll get the referrals from the fire department, police department, hospital, on those folks who are high readmissions to Kish or Valley West. Eric will give me a call sometimes and say, okay, we have so-and-so, they have called us 30 times in the last two months, we need some help on this. And so, these are the typical types of clients for that program, we'll go out and send a care coordinator, and we'll keep going out. A lot of times, they will turn us away, and then we'll come back with a goodie bag from our Get Me to Monday food pantry, and we fill it with all sorts of things, and we keep trying, and we keep trying, and usually, we eventually get in that door, because the goal is to help them, whether they're a hoarder, whether they are, have mental health issues and are unmedicated, if they are self-neglecting to the point where they are unsafe, or they are causing maybe some unsafe situations with their neighbors, where their house might be a fire hazard, or maybe some of the utilities are shut off, we deal with all sorts of things, animal hoarding, infestations, you name it. If you've seen the show Hoarders, it happens here, and there are lots of homes and people who are actually going through those struggles, and we're the agency that you call to deal with that. So, that program, last year, we saw about 110 people for self-neglect/vulnerable adults, and we not only deal with 60 and over seniors, but we also deal with persons with disabilities, 18 to 59, who are self-neglecting. So you could have a 32-year-old, you know, living somewhere who's not taking care of themselves, or shut in, and they're calling 911 quite a bit, and we'll go out and work with them. There is no other agency that does this, and when we have folks come to us, or we get referrals like this, we don't say, it's not my job. We keep trying, and we keep trying, and we know there's a need for this in the community. So, the funding from future grants from the city of DeKalb Human Services is going to go towards this as well. And I think it's really a great program, because it's shown to help reduce the 911 calls, so that, there alone, can save the fire department, police, city municipalities, that can save money, cut down on readmissions to the hospital. It's really a win-win situation. We're seeing people out in their home, which is what we want to do, we want to reach them, but we're also cutting down on folks, you know, using 911 30 times in one month, for example. That's a high number of calls. So, it's an example of one of the programs that money goes towards. Last year, with our core programs, we had over 12,000 contacts. If you throw in our Information and Assistance Program, it's easily 20,000 contacts. So we are a busy, busy agency, and we are expanding every year, and this year is going to be no different, we're looking at two additional programs, hopefully. So, I must say, thank you.
We appreciate all you do, any comments of Tara? If not, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and we're going to miss Eric on our team.
Yeah, I'm sure we will, too, thank you. DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Report. I see Debbie Armstrong, the executive director of DCCVBAC, and Debbie, if you'd come up and make your report for us, please.
Merry Monday, everybody. I just want to take a moment before I start and give you this annual presentation, and thank you for all the support in the past years, as well as the support this year. We do appreciate it, we do work hard for the money, and we're an organization that helps grow the revenue here. So I am going to go a little faster tonight, I'm sure that folks want to get home, and we want them to be safe. So, if there's anything that I brush over, please make sure you stop me, and I'll be happy to go over it again. One thing I want to point out to everybody is that this presentation is on our website, so you have access to that, and can delve back on that if you want to take a look at something again. Okay. There we go. These are our financial partners, our annual report is on our website, you can see that, and you can see the amount that each financial partner invests with us. One thing I want to point out is, this is an FY 18 report, so you will not see anything from Sandwich Hotels here, because their partner is of FY 19 with their hotel tax dollars, so I just want to point that out at the beginning, so that that's clear to everybody. We're always a year behind. These are our in-kind and event sponsors, and we're thankful to all of our stakeholders and our in-kind and event sponsors, and our mission statement is simple, we're supposed to generate economic impact and promote DeKalb County as a premier business and leisure destination. Our last numbers came in at $98.8 million, that's a lot of dollars for DeKalb County, and we've been up eight years in a row, and our bureau and my board is very proud of that. These are our current board members that we have. Again, all this is online, you can see this online, if I'm going a little too fast for We were up 5.5 percent from 2016 in the dollars that contributed to DeKalb County from visitor spending. $7 million in state tax receipts, which was up 11.3 from 2016. $1.66 million in local tax receipts, that was up 5.7 percent. And they're attributed, we have attributed 590 jobs from tourism in 2017. So these are the numbers that we have, you can see that continued to climb. I want to point something out to you, when we didn't have a certified bureau, you can take a look at those numbers back in 2009, what those numbers were. We became certified in 2011, and our first matching grant, which as you all know, comes from the investment that we get locally, and then from the state, we get a matching grant, dollar for dollar, you can see the impact that we have had, and it's really no coincidence, so it's a joy to be able to do that, and to report these numbers to you. This is hotel tax revenue, and this, since I told you this is FY 18, this reflects Sycamore and DeKalb together. The next slide represents DeKalb alone, and you can see the year before last was $316,000 and some change. Right now, we cut this off at July, because that's our annual, but right now, if you look at the numbers that you have in your marketing packets I gave you, we're about $20,000 ahead of schedule where we were last time, with the hotel tax, and we don't even have that new one up yet. This next slide represents the Sycamore Hotel Tax. They have about 100 less rooms than us, but this is just, I split these sides, so you can kind of take a look and get the comparison. Now I want to take you through some of our marketing highlights. I doubt there's a single person in this room that hasn't seen one or all three of these folks. Whiskey Acres was on the cover of our visitors guide, they have brought a lot of visibility and a lot of visitors to our area, and they weren't able to be open with their new visitor center for Black Friday, but we're hoping that they can maybe host some events in December. They will have their visitor center open and running, and it will be open all year round, so that's going to be a big increase for us and them. This is our first-ever Museums and History Center brochure. It's inside your packet there. This is a, this is a community that tends to get underserved, and many of the times, they only have volunteers on their staff, and so, the convention and visitors bureau's duty is to try to serve everyone, and especially those that really don't have the capacity to do it for themselves. So we worked with all the partners in this area and put this brochure out, and we're very- And we're very, very proud of the efforts. It's gotten a lot of accolades from partners and visitors alike. This is our new Bold Spirits brochure. It's the same kind of thing. And what I want to do in the future is take the different niches that we have and try to combine them into a brochure like this and do marketing programs for the different niches that we have. That's in your marketing file, or not your file. Excuse me. Bold Spirits of DeKalb County. I don't know how many of you have heard of this. I would hope all of you. This is a marketing program that we started. It first started with a brochure, just like you saw the history and museums brochure. And it has grown into quite a partnership. All of these folks are contributing and investing with the CVB on their own now, because they've seen such a return on the investment of all the marketing and the promotion that we're doing on their behalf and with them. So, if you take a look here in the center, this Bold Spirits passport is our newest and greatest marketing plan. We got, we know we had at least one tour bus came through of 50 folks that was getting their passports, and they got all five of them stamped. The idea was to get all five stamps in a year, and then we give you a nice free gift to show our appreciation. If you look at the bottom, those are the glasses that we have, the Bold Spirits glasses. So, this has been well received. And it's done really well. We had our first event, we had our first event for Bold Spirits, I'm gonna go back, uh-oh. We had our first event for Bold Spirits on August 11th this year. It was the first time we ever had it. Probably gonna change the date. It was too close, I think, to kids going back to school and vacations and all that kind of thing. But it was held out at John and Mack Orchard. And we had 217 folks for our first event, but not a one of them went away unhappy. And it was really unique in that we had all of our partners, every single one of them, all five, out at John and Mack Orchard, all under, you know, one area. So, that was pretty unique. And we plan on doing it again. Excuse me, should've brought my water. This is a seasonal video. This one is the fall one. I'm not gonna go through this, it takes some time. But we have seasonal videos right now. The holiday video is up. We've had over 100,000 views of our videos this year. So, there are lots of eyes on DeKalb County. These are some of our print ads. We follow what we do with them, with seasonal ads. These are some more of our print ads that we have. I think they're very appealing and eye-catching. That's what we get when we talk to visitors who call and see them. We put out quarterly newsletters. One is going out to you tomorrow, so make sure you look in your mailbox. We put out quarterly newsletters for our partners. And then we also put out events newsletters. We select the events that are coming up for about two months, and we put them out to an act-in group of about 7,000 people. These are some of the numbers from our webpage and our Facebook ads. I won't go through these individually for you. You can look at them, as I said, later. These are just our handles for social media. We are truly social media connectors, and we are always looking for different ways to connect with visitors in this area. So, we use traditional print. And we also use what is social media, what is what everybody is using now. Public relations results. I just wanted to kinda point out to you that everybody knows that we're getting ready to, that we've been celebrating all year, the bicentennial. And so, we worked with the Chicago Tribune, which is something that's provided only to the certified bureaus in this area, to promote different things. They would ask us for things in their bucket list that they wanted to do. So, we pitch everything that we, you know, can for them to consider. So, this year, we've had some very good success. We had Sycamore Speedway named in the top 20 must-see sports attractions. The Egyptian Theater was in the top Illinois architectural attractions. And Whiskey Acres, the bourbon slushy, was in the top 20 drinks to try in Illinois. And trust me, they had to build a new place to put freezers in for the bourbon slushies. So, this is more of some of our public relations results in your packet that I gave you there. You'll see there's a complete full page on the city of DeKalb. That's all editorial, that's earned media. And so, our earned media this year amounted to about $9,100. And then we were at the governor's conference and we had a, I don't know, was it three hours? Brad, I can't remember. It was, we were up all night. 12:30, I think, till 2:30 at night. We were on WGN, late night with Patty. And Nick from Whiskey Acres was with us. Brad was there. We were at the governor's conference on tourism. And they talked about our visitors guide. And Nick was very generous and he got talking points from us and talked about the whole county. That's what I really enjoy about this area. We have attractions and folks that are selfless in their promotion, and they think about everybody. That's a picture of us late night. I think everybody's heard about the Illinois-made program. We have two, we nominate those folks. Everything has to be Illinois-made. And we have John and Mack and Whiskey Acres. And there was a networking reception for them at the governor's conference. Unfortunately, Kevin couldn't be here tonight. I told him to stay home. He just got home to Malta and I didn't want him back on the roads. But this was an invaluable thing for all of our makers. They got to meet with other folks in the county, or in the state, that do what they do. And they talked about different things that they could do and other opportunities to promote tourism. Whiskey Acres was featured in the gift guide. And also, there was a video that launched for them in 2017 that's on EnjoyIllinois.com. That's the state visitors website. Not everybody gets a video, but trust me, we have lots of eyes on that state website. So, that's always good for us. Destination DeKalb. How many people watched any of the high school football championships this year from Champaign? Well, good, good. I did too, a little bit of it. We will have it back next year. But this is why you see this this year, because we're a year behind. We're thanking all of our sponsors and wanna thank the city of DeKalb for your generous sponsorship of this event. The hospitality tent, I'm sure you've probably all been there. It's a great place and we get many, many compliments. And that's in thanks to your contribution to make that happen. It brings in about $800,000 for that weekend. So, trust me, we know how to throw a party for 30,000. National Travel and Tourism Week is always second week in May. This year, we launched our first ever DeKalb County Barn Quilt Trail. It's been very, very well received. It was one of the highest viewed pages for about three months of the year. And we worked with the Farm Bureau and also Bob Myers to get all the photos. And everybody is really excited about this. And the Farm Bureau has, we did this as a compliment to the barn tour that happens in August. It's product development, basically, is what it is. And we've been asked to give a big presentation to the Farm Bureau on our barn quilt tour. It's a self-guided tour. Check it out if you haven't seen it. This is a slide of our Bold Spirits event that I was talking about earlier, John and Mack Orchard. This is where all five partners were. And everybody got to taste all the bold spirits that we have in DeKalb County. The bicentennial, I just wanted to bring this up again, one more time. September 8th, Corey Jobe, the state director of tourism, joined some of our local dignitaries. Jerry Smith was one of them. Kurt Lang was another. I believe Jeff Keiker was there as well. To honor DeKalb County and Northern for some of the things that we have contributed to the history of the state of Illinois. Obviously, Barb Dwyer was one of those. And also, Northern Illinois University, Normal School. The next picture is just a picture of us tailgating. You can see that we've crossed over and had some of the Bold Spirits folks in the Husky Athletic Tent. So, that's one of the benefits. We continue to reach out and tell more people about what we've got here. I think everybody knows we do kite fest. Kite Fest was another great success this year. We had more kites in the air than ever. And our new sales coordinator wrangled about 150 volunteers. So, it was a great, it was a great day and it's a great family event. Also, I just wanted to point out, we did get back the IE SA State Wrestling Bit. And that I want to thank you for, too. That's one of the sports sponsorships that the city of DeKalb passed. And this, we could've lost this. We could've easily lost this. In one weekend, this event brings in about six times the contribution that's invested with the CVB from the city of DeKalb. This year, we're gonna have 25% more wrestlers. So, we are gonna have more folks. And I think that's gonna be really good. We're usually always, you know, happen, and it's even gonna be better this year. It may stay a little longer. So, I just want to go over the return on investment. $98.8 million. That's visitors that have come to this area, spent their money in our businesses, and keep them thriving. The hotel tax revenue was $558,000. That's combined. That's Sycamore DeKalb, because we represent the county. Our earned media was $9,100. Our municipal match was just under 75, or just under $76,000 the previous year. Our grant was 85 and some change. The state kept 10% of that from us and put it back into their budget, so it would've been more. The reason you see these numbers going up is because of the success. And with your investment, that's what it's enabled us to do. Our first grant was $55,000. Excuse me. So, our total operating budget is under $162,000. And for the first time ever, we've had, we now have two full-time employees. And we just hired a new sales coordinator, August 13th. And trust me, I remember the day she walked in the door. We're gonna do more tour groups. We're gonna go out and we're gonna do more trade shows to talk about this area and get more people in. And she's also gonna work on marketing programs to get some more private money. So, I just want to go over in summary some of the things that were said about the CVB when Bill Geis from DMO Pros was here. I just, I'm gonna go to the top one, the top bullet point here. And I know I'm taking my time, so I won't go through everything. 92% of those surveyed or interviewed felt that the CVB was doing a very effective or effective job. That was county-wide. We had high marks for our online presence. And they said our website was easy to navigate and easy on the visitors. But I want to point out this last slide that says, "We're small but mighty." And probably nothing could be truer than that. And I appreciate Mayor Smith's comments that you made earlier in one of the meetings, talking about how hard we work, because that is true. And I'm gonna just let you know, our bureau is drastically underfunded compared to both state and national average. Invested with certified DMOS in part because of Home Rule. We're Home Rule in this area. And Bill concluded, "If there is a single factor that's holding us back from producing the kind of impact that stakeholders want, need, and expect, it's that the bureau is significantly underfunded for the job at hand and for the competition that surrounds us." So, we have been successful, but we've done that with your investment. And I want to thank you again for that and let you know how much we appreciate it. And just let you take this number away with you. $98.8 million in visitor dollars coming to DeKalb County. Thank you very much for your time and for the support.
Thank you, Debbie. Before you leave, any comments or questions of Debbie? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate, thanks for all you do. Okay. Number three, approval of the mayor's appointments. I have no appointments tonight. However, if you may recall, over the last year, what we tried to do is to align most of our appointments so that they end on December 31st, so that we can make it easier to have people rotate off various boards and commissions. Some of those, then, will require shorter terms. Some of those will require maybe a month or two longer terms. But I think we're to the point where we're going to get, we're gonna see that come to fruition, especially with some of the reappointments that we have. So, I think there are gonna be a couple of appointments that I'm gonna have in December and a number of reappointments based on that December 31 termination date, or the end of a particular term. Okay, moving on to item number four, public participation. We do have a couple of folks who have indicated they'd like to speak to this item. These are folks who'd like to speak to items not on the agenda. And I'd ask Duane and Mark, who are the two who have signed up for this, to try to keep it into that three-minute limit, if you could. Thank you.
Duane, Duane. The city raised its Home Rule sales tax to 1 and 3/4% on July 1st, 2008. This made the total sales tax 8%. I wonder if Mark Bernacki and the city council knew how devastating this would be to our local economy 10 years later. The total 10% with sales tax and bar and restaurant tax has cost us another downtown restaurant, O'Leary's Irish Pub and Grill, one of the anchors downtown. We are uncompetitive. We have a lack of growth in DeKalb. Spending in the city is out of control. The city of Harvey has reached a pension fund agreement after the state withheld tax revenues. The Illinois Comptroller, Susanna Mendoza, withheld 3.3 million in sales, income, local use, transportation, motor fuel replacement, and excise tax revenues from Harvey since February. Harvey was forced to lay off 40 public safety workers because they weren't funding their pensions. That could happen here. According to the Better Government Association, DeKalb's fire pension showed a net liability of $42.7 million and a funding ratio of 39.21%. The police pension at $35.6 million and a funding ratio of 47.92%. The combined net liability is over $78 million. Annual cost of living adjustments for pensions are 3% per year. In 2018, the city of Sycamore committed an additional $150,000 for each pension fund above the regular contributions. Current funding levels for the Sycamore Police Pension are 64.3% and 60.2% for the fire pension. Moody's says DeKalb's pension burden is elevated and growing. Its three-year average adjusted net pension liability of $170 million is equal to 10.6% of full value or 4.7x operating revenue. Our bond rating, a B2A negative outlook, may be lowered. I just wanted to consider DeKalb's pension funding ratios as of 1999, 19 years ago. The IMRF was funded at 109.49%, the police at 88.52%, and the fire at 62.13%. We better consider pensions. It's gonna death, it's gonna kill us. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. Mark Charvat and then Steve Capitan also. I didn't say his name, Steve, so.
Couple of things. There is some confusion as far as the leaf collection service that is due to a social media posting by the city of DeKalb. I've noticed that on the city of DeKalb Facebook page, there was a sudden post where leaf collection suddenly canceled. Of course, most of the residents had no idea that the leaf collection would be suddenly canceled. So, there are piles of leaves on parkways all throughout the city. I know my subdivision, just by itself, in my little cul-de-sac area, there are three giant piles of leaves. These leaves are gonna remain there till probably, what, April is when we start it up again, as far as landscape waste. The problem is, there was a rather Problem is, there was a rather confusing social media post on the part of the city, first telling people they had until the final week of leaf collection would take place this week, and then suddenly because of the snow, and it's understandable that they can't pick up leaves during the snow. But what I would advise the city to do is, once the snow melts, maybe schedule a week in early December where we can pick up those leaves. Because those leaves are going to get stuck in the sewers. And if they're not, if the actual resident cannot pack these up in bags, which they're not going to be able to do since they're covered with snow, Lake Shore's not going to be able to collect these this week. They're going to be sitting there all throughout the winter. Mark my words, there are going to be piles of leaves. And these leaves will, with the wind, blow into the street and clog up the sewers, which will further cause harm. I want to comment also about snow plowing. I'm pleased with the fact that the crews were on the streets right-of-way cleaning up the streets. But there's something weird with this snow. I don't know if anybody traveled down Annie Glidden or South Fourth Street, but it almost feels like you're driving on the moon's surface, where it's like, I don't know if the blades are not sharpened on the plows, but it's really strange that a lot of the main thoroughfares still have a ton of snow. Now, I understand it's hard-packed snow, but this is kind of strange why it hasn't been cleaned up better on the main streets. I can understand subdivisions and small streets, but on South Fourth Street, on Annie Glidden, kind of a sloppy job. So I'm just kind of curious if we're going to do something about that before things freeze up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Steve Capitan?
I missed the committee of the whole meeting, and I wanted to address something regarding When I was on the city council, we had a budget crunch. And in that budget crunch, we raised the franchise fee for cable to its maximum of 5%. And after our crisis, our financial crisis was over, I advocated that the franchise fee, which is in addition to utility tax, all of the utilities have a utility tax. Only cable has a franchise fee. And my perception of the franchise fee is that it should be designated for the purposes of, that are supplied by the cable companies. And that would be any costs the city incurs in terms of negotiating once every 10 years. And the major cost would be funding the television government access channel. At that time, more than 50% of the revenue, which is a few hundred thousand dollars a year, I don't know what it is today, was going for general fund expenses. So I don't know where it's at today. I suspect with the budget crunches, that it is even further, a higher percentage, a much higher percentage, going toward general fund than it was at the time. So I just want you to take that into consideration when you look at this and examine the philosophical approach to how franchise fees are treated. Because the franchise fee is in addition to the utility tax, that the other utilities that use our right-of-ways pay. So keep that in mind, please.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, we'll keep that, as a matter of fact, the committee of the whole meeting tonight discussed, we were talking about the peg, possibility of a peg fee. And that sort of pays, plays into what we're, what we're going to do as we negotiate with Comcast and MetroNet. So I appreciate your remarks. I did miss one speaker, and that is Brad Hoy, who wanted to speak, I believe, to maybe the item on DCCVBA.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and City Council. I'll be very brief, because I just want to follow up on our executive director, Debbie Armstrong's presentation at the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. My name, of course, Brad Hoy, and I'm the chair of the board of the bureau. And I want to reiterate what Debbie said and thank City Council for your support over the years, for the organization, and particularly for some of the special events. As Debbie pointed out, we're having some outstanding numbers and some outstanding participation for the IESA state wrestling championships, which were renewed this past spring. And that's a big event. We had it for 10 years. It's been nothing but successful here in DeKalb and at the NIU Convocation Center. And several communities were vying for that event. And again, we were able to win that bid, and we'll have it for another 10 years. We also have in 2019, the IHSA football championships coming back. So I appreciate your support for those two, for those two events. But I also appreciate the support for the organization as a whole. One thing that Debbie touched upon, and I think it really needs to be emphasized, is the fact that for every dollar that's invested in the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau, every penny is matched by the state of Illinois. Now, she did mention this past fiscal year, that 10% of that was withheld by the state. That's because of the fiscal crisis. We're hoping to get 100% back from the state. So every penny that the city of DeKalb and our other partners invest in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we get matching funds from the state of Illinois. There's not many organizations that can claim that. And it's, I think it's one of the benefits, well, I know it is, one of the benefits of being a certified destination organization for DeKalb County. The city of DeKalb is the, obviously, the largest municipality in the county. They make the largest investment, and we certainly appreciate that. They also stand, the city also benefits the most. It has the most resources, and it benefits the most from that investment. We talked about the bold spirits. It's one of the most exciting things that I think has happened in the county and in this community in a long, long time. And when you look at the trend toward agritourism, and you look at what the legacy of this community is in this county with agriculture, I think that the time is right to up the investment in travel and tourism to this area and to this community, as opposed to holding it steady or even cutting that back. Because as you've seen, we've experienced steady growth over the past 10 years. And with the way that we're going right now, that growth is only going to continue. But we need to invest in that. We're making an investment in the organization. We hired on a full-time person to work in sales. We're working on public and private partnerships to keep this thing going and keep it strong. Again, thank you for your support. I know I'm preaching to the choir. I usually am when I come and speak to this group. And we certainly appreciate your support and hope it continues to have this great partnership with the city of DeKalb in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Let's move along now to item number F on, or number F on the, on the agenda, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion in omnibus form, unless any council member would like any of the items to be removed from the consent agenda. I'm going to read each of the following items separately. Number one, approval of city council minutes. Number two, receive and file accounts payable and payroll through November 26, 2018, in the amount of $1,957,343.44. B, investment and bank balance summary through September 2018. And C, year-to-date revenues and expenditures for the general fund and water fund through September 2018. I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico? Yes. Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mark Port?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven I?
The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Okay, now we move along, items for separate action. The first one is ordinance number 2018-069, amending Chapter 38, intoxicating liquors. Section 38.25, hours for sale of alcohol as it pertains to altering the hours of sale for alcoholic beverages at grocery stores. This is the second reading. I'd entertain a motion, please. Some have been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Norrico. And I'm going to ask Dean Frieders to speak to this item in just a moment. Alderman Fagan is doing business with one of the concerns and has recused himself from voting on this issue. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. This returns for second reading and passed on first reading at the last city council meeting. This contemplates a change in the hours for liquor sales for grocery or drugstores in the city of DeKalb, to be essentially coterminous with those offered in Sycamore. It did pass on first reading at the last meeting. I'm happy to entertain any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions regarding this issue? Alderman Favor?
So I was debating this. One of the things I was looking at was the, one of the things I was contemplating throwing out there was changing the liquor license fee for those that choose to have the extended hours to be the same as what a packaged liquor store was. I believe that's 1.33x the current liquor fee, if I'm not mistaken. Dean, is that correct?
The current liquor fees for grocery and drugstores vary depending on the size of the grocery or drugstore. For a small grocery or drugstore, the renewal fee is 3,300. For a medium, it's 6,600. For a large, it's 9,900. By comparison, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong year. Those should be 3,511, 7,022, and $10,533. By comparison, a packaged liquor store is 2,660. So the renewal fees for the license, for the packaged liquor are substantially lower than the renewal fees for grocery or drugstore. The initial issuance fees for a small grocery or drugstore are less than that for a packaged liquor, but the initial issuance fee for a medium or large grocery or drugstore is greater than that for a packaged liquor.
And then one other thought or comment was, if an existing packaged liquor store wanted to become a small grocery store, how difficult would that be for, they want to convert from their current setup to become a small grocery store to attract additional foot traffic? Is that possible?
They would have to comply with the square footage requirements applicable and the marketing requirements applicable to grocery stores, which would be very challenging. They also would have to meet the minimum square footage requirement for, whether a small, medium, and large grocery store, which not all of our current packaged liquor stores do. So for those that meet the minimum square footage requirements, it's theoretically possible, but it would require substantial changes in how they're laid out and a substantial reduction. And they couldn't be 100% liquor. It's a small portion of the sales area that would be allowed to be liquor. So it'd be fundamentally changing the nature of the business.
Right. Okay. All right. So are both of those questions and pretty much answered to your satisfaction, Tony?
Very, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mark Port?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I?
Motion on the ordinance passes. Thank you. Okay, now, if you recall, we changed the agenda that item number five on the one you're looking at there is, we're going to move up to item number two under the items for separate action agenda. So number two becomes this. Ordinance 2018-085, adopting Chapter 37 Tax Increment Financing Regulations. This is first reading. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Speaking of this item is our economic development planner, Jason Mitchnick.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Before you this evening are actually several items that are related to tax increment financing. I want to present this a little bit differently than I did at our last meeting because of how interrelated all of these items are. I want to make sure that you're understanding everything that's presented in totality. And after I go over everything, if you have questions with the other items, I can answer those at that time. At the time of the first reading of the creation of TIF III, which was at our last meeting, we had been working with our partner taxing districts that have overlapping jurisdictions within the proposed TIF. And I described how, over the past several months, we'd been working with the Joint Review Board to develop a framework and a draft intergovernmental agreement that included some new control measures on TIF and how it would be reported, as well as a surplus declaration on TIF II. Following our last meeting, we learned that not all of the taxing districts that were party to that IGA are going to be moving forward with the support. So this evening, we're presenting some of the same control measures, just in a different format. So the item, the first ordinance before you this evening, which is the creation of Chapter 37, would include some of the items and provisions that were included in that IGA, but would be adopted in the municipal code. Specifically, the provisions that would be introduced in Chapter 37 would include the quarterly joint review board, review board meetings that would be recorded. That was included in the IGA, as well as the enhanced reporting of all transactions, not just the categories and the annual report as they're currently presented. And this would be done in arrears at each quarterly meeting. And each expenditure that the city uses TIF funding for would include a citation back to the TIF Act of how that is warranted within, within the state statute. It also includes a provision that no standalone infrastructure projects, other than the municipal airport, could be funded through TIF. However, if the city did find a project that they would like to seek approval for the use of TIF funds, they could go to the Joint Review Board and request that. And with the recommendation, a positive recommendation from the Joint Review Board, the city could include infrastructure projects being funded by TIF. In addition to that, all TIF projects and incentives would be required to, we would be required to publicly disclose a return on investment projection with that project. And there would be, however, there would be no predetermined return on investment or guidelines, which would provide a yes or a no for a project, just that we would have to state whether or not a project had a return on investment and what that was projected to be. If council did determine their project had value, but it didn't have a measurable ROI, they could still approve that. The other thing that's included in Chapter 37 is that any changes to that chapter would have to be approved, have a, sorry, it wouldn't have to be approved, but have a positive recommendation with 2/3 vote of the Joint Review Board for the city to change that ordinances. However, technically, if a future administration and council wanted to go back and remove that clause from the ordinance, they could do so. This would be more from a practical standpoint to show good faith with our partner taxing districts that we want to work with them moving forward. And I think the reason that we're bringing this forward in this format is that with, with no longer having the IGA in support of the other taxing districts, we want to look forward, move forward in a fashion that we can have the highest level of transparency and be a leader in the state in terms of the community that's trying to do things in the most transparent and proactive way of making sure that TIF is being used in the way that it is intended to be used. The other ordinances that are before you in relation to TIF would involve the omnibus approval. So you have the five ordinances that would create TIF, as well as amend, the two existing TIF districts. And then you have two separate budget amendments. The first budget amendment, the first budget amendment is the one that was introduced at the last meeting and was approved on first reading, which includes the IGA. Staff is no longer recommending approval of that. In lieu of that, we're presenting a separate budget amendment without the IGA, but would still include the same surplus declaration of 11.25 million. If council was to approve the budget amendment with the 11.25, we would still have an unobligated fund balance in TIF I projected through the end of TIF I of $8 million, which could be transferred either into the new TIF or spent on projects within that TIF, as long as they were designated by the end of 2021. Should council elect not to approve the budget amendment and surplus declaration of 11.25 million, we- million, we would be required, per state statute, to declare a surplus of approximately $5.4 million out of TIF II by the end of this year. And this is due to a provision in the TIF Act that states that the, the city cannot accumulate more than 36 months of TIF revenue without having declared a use for it. And looking back at our annual reports and ordinances and resolutions over the last several years, the city has not taken action in TIF II to declare a use for those funds. And therefore, we would be required to have a minimum surplus declaration at the end of this year of $5.4 million. That would leave a fund balance and then including the fund balance that would be left after that, as well as the revenue that we're projected to receive in 2019, which is the final revenue in TIF II, we'd have approximately $2.87 million that could be designated for a use. However, we would have to take action by the end of this year in order to designate a use for that $2.87 million, or would be automatically have to be declared surplus by default. That, the, in terms of that $2.87, the city could declare a use for that in either TIF I, TIF, the proposed TIF if it is approved, or TIF II. However, it does have to be approved by December 31st, as I had mentioned. With that, I'd like to entertain any questions or comments, but I'd like to defer to Attorney Frieders if there's anything that I missed in regards to Chapter 37 and the other ordinances.
I think as, as Jason indicated, we are looking to provide the council with the opportunity to establish some transformative TIF policies to address the use of TIF in any TIF districts that the city may have on a prospective basis. As we've looked at this, we haven't identified any communities across the state that have implemented regulations as comprehensive as this, that introduce this level of transparency. We've looked to listen to the concerns from other taxing districts regarding actions of the past and tried to come up with ways of ensuring that there's better communication, better understanding, better disclosure, far in excess of the minimum requirements of state law, to ensure that on a moving forward basis, there's no question about the city's TIF expenditures or projects, and to ensure that both the future city councils and other taxing districts are fully informed as to the city's activities and expenditures with regard to the use of TIF funding.
Before I open it up to any questions or comments, we do have a motion on the floor and a second that would be first reading of this ordinance, which would adopt tax increment financing regulations. And I think it was a wise move to move this, to this point on the agenda before we go into the omnibus voting on the five other TIF scenarios. And then we're going to get to the intergovernmental agreement, which we passed last meeting, but is coming up this time for second reading. I wish this mayor was a TIF expert. He is not. I have tried to learn so much, and I appreciate the input that I've received, not only from staff, but from all the other JRB partners. I'd like to, just in executive summary, repeat what you just said, Jason, so that it's perfectly clear what these tax increment financing regulations would be, if in fact this council decides to pass it. Number one, the city would conduct JRB, Joint Review Board meetings on a quarterly basis with taxing districts affected by a TIF. Number two, the city would implement and maintain restrictions on the use of TIF expenditures to cover administrative expenses. Let's face it, that has been the crux of some of the questions over the last 60 days or so. I think the first JRB meeting was September 4th, if I don't, if I'm not mistaken. Number three, the city would agree to not utilize TIF revenues for standalone infrastructure projects, such as street resurfacing, water main, or storm sewer replacements. Number four, for any redevelopment project, the city would be required to prepare and publicly disclose an analysis of return on investment, ROI. While ROI and analysis is not necessarily determinative of whether a project would be approved, this requirement would ensure that the council and the public would have an opportunity to discuss the consideration as it relates to the purpose of TIF districts. And finally, number five, if we choose to approve this ordinance on first reading, the ordinance would include language indicating that any amendment to Chapter 37 would require discussion with the JRB prior to adoption, a two-thirds supermajority vote approving the amendment, and number three, both first and second reading, with no waiver of second reading. Ladies and gentlemen, I reiterated these five points because I felt it was important, not only because you don't do a great job, Jason, because you do. And Dean, I appreciate your backing up what Jason had to say, but I feel it's important that we move forward in a transparent way. And with that, I would open it up to any further comments or questions regarding this ordinance, 2018-085. Alderman Norrico?
Based on my understanding of TIF and concerns of the other taxing bodies, I agree with the mayor that this really, the proposed ordinance addresses many concerns. I am disappointed that, given the time and energy and effort on the part of the city, as well as the other taxing bodies, that the intergovernmental agreement could not be modified in such a way that there was agreement. I wonder what broke down, you know, I'm, I'm going to adopt my be practical principle and no useful purpose is served by delving into what happened, but rather, you know, what can we salvage from that experience? And I think this is certainly a positive effort. I do have some concerns regarding the creation of TIF III, but I'll hold those off until the vote on this issue.
Any further comment on this? Alderman Faver?
I think it's a great effort. I have a question kind of about number four. I'm concerned that we still have issues, like trying to go back and look at records of, of previous, what we spent money on, what the ROI was for those projects. I'd really like to see a documentation of all the TIF projects and then an annual review or, you know, a recurring review. It doesn't have to be annual, just a recurring review of those projects so that we can go back and look and say, we agreed on this particular project, this is what our ROI was when the project was put forth. Two years later, we're on track, we're not on track. Right now, we don't have that feedback mechanism. I'd really like to see something like that put into this. And again, it doesn't have to be all the projects at one time in a year. I mean, it could be once a quarter, you know, something like that. It could be projects over X thousands of dollars, the bigger projects. As staff transfer in and out of the department or things like that, I'm concerned that we're going to lose records between staff, between years, between mayor, you know, and city council, that the record keeping I'm concerned with. So I'd really like, I don't, I don't have the solution. You know, we, we put it all into, to a, we all have Microsoft Office 365 now, so it all has to go into Word or something like that. I don't know. But I think everybody up here would like to see that. I think that type of a review that we could say at, you know, given milestone of two years, five years, eight years for longer-term projects, we just want to see, are they, are they, are they doing what we expected them to do? Because right now, we don't have that feedback. One of the projects that we approved, I was on the council when we approved it, I was under the impression that their tax, property taxes, what they were at the time, and once the project was done, where they would be has changed. This is, you know, a project that was done several years ago when I first came on, and I was surprised to see that the taxes are actually lower today than I think they were at the time the project was approved. So we lost out on that. That ROI isn't where we originally thought it was going to be. And to have that feedback so we could try and prepare, it'd give us a really good way to look at projects going forward to see, are they the type of projects that we want to invest in?
Alderman Verbic?
And how we include the public participation. We had a number of public events where the wishes of the community were put out and discussed, what would they expect to see from TIF. And those are notes that we didn't largely discuss as a council. So I think how do we factor in that public comment also into the document as a permanent source of record? I'm still a no on this. I still think the $11.25 million declaration of surplus is excessive. I, I, like the mayor, I'm not a TIF expert, but certainly I went back and tried to calculate the number of staff hours put into some of these measures that were intended to be TIF projects or discussed as TIF project. The STEAM Center, the library, again, we have staff putting in hundreds of hours into these efforts. And those figures have to be calculated in, to Alderman Faver's point. Let's have a documentation of all of that, because I, I think that that $11.25 number should be significantly lower and that that, the TIF money should be used for projects of redevelopment, restoring blight, or certainly, let's listen to the wishes of the community in those TIF districts as to their expectations.
Alderman Fanouken?
Jason, if I may, a point of clarification. So the ordinance before us right now only is beginning creating the TIF district, correct? And has nothing to do with the potential distribution of surplus funds?
Actually, the ordinance before you right now is the creation of Chapter 37. So this would be how the city goes about both any new TIFs and the existing TIFs in terms of the quarterly meetings of the JRB, enhanced reporting, measuring ROI, all that.
Okay, but my, my main point was it has nothing to do at this point about the potential distribution of the surplus.
Correct. This ordinance does not.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the first of several TIF ordinances and discussions on our agenda tonight. Alderman Faver?
So I'll just ask, Jason, I guess, what are we doing today to track the last two or three years' projects that, that we've done since you've been on, onboard with the city? Are we, are we creating a folder on a shared drive that has each project specifically listed? Is it, are we giving them a project name and putting them? How, if, if I came to you and asked you, let's say Cornerstone, where are we at on Cornerstone? Is it easy enough to pull that information or is it pretty, is it also a detail? It's going to be a lot of work to pull out the details for, for where we're at.
One of the things that I've started working on is, is going back and looking at all the projects, the public-private projects. So looking at the, the incentives that this, the, the city has provided, putting those into one master Excel spreadsheet and looking at, you know, when they're approved, what types of incentives, because if you look at each one of the agreements that we've approved, that the city's approved, there's different requirements. Going back, you know, some of them require sales tax generation, some of them are property tax, some are simply forgivable loan based on a business maintaining the property and the improvements that are made and funded through TIF. So looking at the types of agreements, and then for the ones that are tied to a tax generation, we'll go back and we'll look at, okay, what is the, what are the starting figures? And then on an annual basis, we could go in and pull the newest assessment and then look at the sales tax. In terms of reporting, especially publicly, that is going to be the most challenging thing, because sales tax is, is something that is confidential. We could do something similar to the way that the city tracked the strategic plan, where we could say whether or not something is on track or is falling behind. I would want to discuss that further with Attorney Frieders, just to understand whether or not that falls within maintaining confidentiality, since it wouldn't be an exact figure, but would at least signal towards something. I think the challenge with especially sales tax is, you know, if you look, not, it's not always going to be a linear growth. So the first couple of years of a business may not be as high as the last year, last years of the term of an agreement. So it becomes difficult to project and say whether or not something is on track. But we could, we could share with those that have been approved by the Department of Revenue to see sales tax, that they could see that data. But as of right now, that is something that I'm working on, is providing a summary of all of the agreements, especially the, the private incentives and the types of, of clawbacks that we have with those.
If I can jump in on that one too as well. If you look at the redevelopment agreements that the city has done over the past several years, the level of detail in terms of what is required from the project sponsor and what they're required to submit to the city is far in excess of anything the city has done in the past. So if you say, what was money spent on in Cornerstone, for example, we can go and we can show you down to, here's the individual invoices, here's the waiver of subcontracture liens, here's every penny that was spent from any source of public funds on every aspect of the project. And we can go through and document with great precision what the expenditures were for and demonstrate how they're TIF eligible, and demonstrate how they're within the scope of what that agreement contemplates. That kind of change in our approach to the development agreements has been a really critical factor in improving the quality of our records with respect to third-party TIF expenditures. What we're talking about with the regulations the council's looking at is ensuring that we're meeting that same transparency standard. So if we come, if, if this is approved and we come to the first joint review board meeting where we're, will be a quarter in arrears, but we're looking at what's being presented, we're anticipating presenting information on city expenditures that meets that same level of detail, where we're disclosing, this is the expense, this is what it was incurred for, this is the statutory eligibility citation for it, and this is how we're documenting and tracking those expenses. We've done a, a very good job of bringing the private side up to a good transparency standard. So for the past several years, we can demonstrate very readily what the funding has been used for, and we require the applicants to adhere very narrowly to, here's our list of what we need. And that's caused Jason to have a lot of conversations where he goes back to someone, even on a small project, and requires that they provide more documentation. We're trying to bring our standards up to that same level, to that same expectation, so we can very clearly show you every dollar that's spent.
Yeah, no, the, the paperwork I've seen in the last several have been just phenomenal. I mean, you've done a great job. I'm not saying anything about the job that was done, but I'm, I, I know that some assumptions are made, because you have to make, you have to do that. You have to make an assumption on what the property tax is going to be out on a 30-year contract. So at year five, it'd be nice to know, was our assumption correct? And if it wasn't, what is it today? And then do we need to correct the next 25 years? And how does that impact the project? Does it really adversely impact the project? And then is there something we could do to maybe get the project? I'm just looking for, I'm not looking, like I said, I'm not looking for an annual review. It might be like on a 30-year project, you might do every five years or some. I'd just like some sort of a way to review. It'd be great to have a list of all the projects that have been done and where we could choose to review quarterly or whatever. Again, a few chosen projects, if it has to be, it's green or it's red, it's on track, it's not on track, and the explanation might just be, property tax was underestimated, which would be fantastic, or it was overestimated, and, and then we would know where we're at with the projects. Is, is that something we could do? Could we add that as a number six to the, to the document? Can we add that as a number six to the document? Or is it something we just need to bring up as new business and put in some sort of a reporting structure for TIF? But it kind of seems like it would go in this document if it was...
Yeah, no, that is certainly something we can do. We would need to, I think Jason identified the biggest concern, which is reporting on sales tax and confirming that we don't run afoul of some very narrow restrictions.
And again, I'm fine with, I don't want to share confidential information. Again, if it was a red-yellow-green tracking system that just said, you know, the assumptions, even if you said the assumptions in property tax weren't correct, or, but again, the more detail would be better, but if it had to be red-yellow-green, that's fine.
For every other source of revenue, we can give you exact dollars. For the Department of Revenue regulations on sales tax, our reciprocal agreement with them that allows them to disclose information to us, we can't even share individual information with other taxing bodies. We can't share anything that gets down to any kind of individual reporting level on what an individual sales tax generator may be producing.
But could we say at year five that our assumptions that were made were on track or they're not on track? They're yellow or green?
I would want to do some research on that. I'm sure that there's a methodology. I wouldn't want to commit to something without knowing exactly where the Department of Revenue would be on that. Because they've been, we've reached out to them previously and tried to, we've tried to share sales tax information with the county, which we didn't think would be a problem. And they responded very emphatically with a no. So, other than the sales tax component of it, we could certainly build in, reporting to council on a periodic basis about the actual revenue generation or job creation from individual development projects. That would, that could certainly be included.
Okay.
Jerry?
Alderman Fanouken?
So, then, Dean, we could go ahead and pass this tonight on first reading, allowing you some time to seek that information you were just talking about, and then maybe in the next council meeting, we could pass it as amended at that time, if that would make Alderman Faver much more comfortable.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
The answer is yes, okay.
So, then, I'd like to call a question.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, a second. Roll call.
Faver?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Thank you. Motion passes. And based on the conversation, we will have second reading at our next meeting. Okay, now, that was item two. So, going through our pages, what was item two on the agenda now becomes item number three. And that is to pass these in one omnibus form. Is that correct? And let me read the following titles in their entirety. What I'm going to do is read those. I'm going to ask for a motion. I'm going to ask for a second. I'm going to ask for Jason to explain it. And we do have a couple of folks in the audience who would like to speak to this item. Number two, this is actually the, this is actually number three on the agenda tonight. Creating the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing and Omnibus Approval of the Following Ordinances. A, Ordinance 2018-070, adopting tax increment allocation financing for the DeKalb Central Business District Redevelopment Project Area. This is second reading. B, Ordinance 2018-071, approving the City of DeKalb, Illinois, DeKalb Central Business District Redevelopment Project Area Tax Increment Financing District Alability Study and Redevelopment Plan and Project. That is second reading. C, Ordinance 2018-072, Designating the Proposed DeKalb Central Business District Redevelopment Project Area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Act. This is second reading. D, Ordinance 2018-073, Adopting an Amendment to the City of DeKalb Central Area Tax Increment Financing District. This is second reading. And E, Ordinance 2018-074, Adopting an Amendment to the City of DeKalb Tax Increment Financing District Number Two. This is also second reading. I entertain a motion in omnibus to approve these in omnibus form.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Faver. I'm now going to turn this over to Jason Mitchnick, after which, we'll have a couple of folks in the audience who I think would like to make a few comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Rather than going over all of the details that I shared with you at the last meeting, I wanted to address some of the questions and concerns that council had brought up. One of those was in regards to the historical expenditures and looking at how we had used TIF dollars over the last 30 years. There's a, in the backup, there was a link to the staff memo from earlier this year in January where we looked at that exact thing. When you look at the categorical expenditures, the highest category for how the city has used TIF in the past has been in regards to infrastructure projects. That's where the vast majority of those. In terms of measuring a return on investment on infrastructure projects, it becomes very difficult. Because one of the things, for an example, is if you're looking at a street maintenance project in a residential neighborhood, how do you measure that return on investment? Paving a street can have an economic impact, a positive one for the values of homes. However, how do you know what the loss would have been had you not paved that street? You also have to account for the opportunity cost of other infrastructure projects or other private projects that could have been supported with those dollars. Looking at the eight categories that are provided, the third lowest category was the private incentives in public-private projects. Those are the types of projects that I've heard from this council that you want to see us support more of using TIF moving forward, which is the intent of Chapter 37, is to really steer the city towards looking at using TIF to maximize increases in EAV in the tax base. Another question or another comment that was brought up was in regards to the other taxing districts and how much money that the other taxing districts have received in TIF. That was the second highest category by total expenditures. At that time, we only had numbers going through 2016. Since then, we've had the audit for 1625 and 17, so some updated figures. This is over the history of the TIF. We've, 53 million, 53.6 million has been distributed to the other taxing districts out of the TIF funds, with the school district being the largest at 28.6 million over that period of time. The city was the second highest benefactor from that, which breaks down to the 11.25 that was transferred to our general fund, which was the basis for the calculation and the surplus distribution of 11.25. The city's also benefited from 2.7 million that we've got through the surplus distribution that's based off of our sales tax that went into. Because TIF 1 was established during a time where we could collect sales tax increment, we are able to pay ourselves back for the sales tax that would have normally gone into the general fund at that point, at that point in time. That is allowed in the TIF Act. And it's actually a requirement, if you are going to declare surplus, that the state and the city get paid back for sales tax prior to any of the other taxing districts. And then, these property tax surplus. So, after the sales tax calculation is pulled from the surplus distribution, the city also gets a portion of the property tax surplus on an annual basis, which was approximately 1.7. And then, the third point that we discussed in that January meeting was, moving forward, how are we going to develop an investment strategy? And we looked at three different frameworks, which were maximizing return on investment, minimizing long-term liabilities, and then engaging in place-making exercises, which I think a combination of those was what I heard from council, is looking at each project individually and the merits of it and how they fit with the overall vision. At that time, we were looking at using the downtown plans, and that was one of the reasons for looking at the creation of the proposed TIF III. The other thing that I'd like to highlight with the creation of TIF III, if these ordinances are approved, is that this would reset the base, although the properties that are proposed to be included in this are currently in TIFs. When you pull them out of the existing TIF districts and place them into a new TIF district, it resets the base EAV, which would result in approximately a $5.3 million increment going back onto the tax rolls in this tax year. So, that is something that council's going to want to account for later this evening when talking about the tax levy. And then, I'd also like to point out that with the IGA no longer going forward and getting support from the other taxing districts, one of the provisions that was in that IGA that is no longer, the city's going to be bound to would be the surplus distribution.
Would you repeat that again?
Without, now that the intergovernmental agreement is no longer going to be supported, if the city does not approve that budget amendment in IGA, the surplus distribution that was included in that out of TIF III would no longer be required. So, the full increment in TIF III would be realized if council does approve TIF III this evening. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Does everybody understand what he just said in the final?
I do.
Believe it or not.
I do, too.
Explain it to me, Pat.
That's going to, all right. So, what we're going to be doing is, either we're going to pass TIF III, this is the crux of it.
Okay.
We're going to distribute 11.2 million out to the taxing bodies. But we're going to develop TIF III and not have an intergovernmental agreement, where if we do, it's not agreed upon by the other government entities. Am I correct?
The ordinances before you right now would result in the creation of TIF III. There's further action with the other ordinances that would have to be taken by council in order to...
I understand that, but you have to also understand that when we're looking at this, how this is presented to us, okay? If I say yes to this, then I'm obligated to this down here. And that's, and that's something that you're going to hear from me on.
Well, I'm not a rocket scientist, and that's why I ask you to explain that to me. Alderman Faver?
So, I might want to just keep quiet, but I'll go ahead and jump into the water.
Oh, speak up, Tony.
So, I would say, no, we're not obligated to number four, if that's what you're thinking of. If we approve these in omnibus form, and number three, I believe the recommendation is to vote against, because we don't have the IGA.
Right, right.
What you were talking about is, part of the IGA, there was a mandatory surplus that needed to be declared. And because we're not approving the IGA, the IGA has not been approved.
Right.
It's not, no longer part of the TIF. We no longer are required to declare a mandatory surplus every year?
The IGA contemplated a surplus starting in year four of TIF III.
Yeah.
And then, that increased to 50% in year eight. So, they're separate items. With the IGA, if council does not approve of that, there would be no surplus distribution out of TIF III if council approves the creation of TIF III.
Correct. So, we're not required to do the years four through eight ladder up to 50%.
Okay, good. That's understandable. So, A, B, C, D, E, omnibus form. Yes, Alderman Markwart?
Couple of things. I like the passing of Chapter 37 because many of those things are what should have been done in the past, as far as administering the TIF district. Most importantly, the general fund transfers, which since I've been on council, I've said that we need to get rid of, we need to get rid of because it's nonsensical, the amounts. And the creation of this TIF really does focus on more what the TIF was intended for. I appreciate all the work that was done with Renew DeKalb and so on and so forth. There was a lot of infrastructure that was done in order to set the stage, maybe too far to the infrastructure standpoint. But that's what I'm excited about with the third TIF, that is more focused on getting that return on investment that Alderman Faver's talking about, and focusing on the public-private investment. With the way things are looking, you know, we need to do a lot of that in that area. So, that's why I'm excited about Central Business TIF with these regulations coming into play to guide. And the document from the consultant, I mean, that also had most of these in there as well as the guiding document. So, it goes hand in hand.
So, this vote that we're being asked to make tonight in second reading in omnibus form excites you, Mike, in a positive way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, and it's got the regulations in place to make sure it stays on track. That's the part that excites me. Because, let's be honest, you know, a lot of the things that we've done with TIF in the past, there was absolutely no return on investment. You know, they were things that were done to be nice to other taxing bodies. They were things, you know, to do those other improvements for them and things that were for niceties. But this, I think, has a little bit extra teeth to it and has the guiding part for future councils.
Thank you. Alderman Norrico. And then, Alderman Verbic?
Are there any specific projects which would potentially be in the pipeline for TIF III dollars?
Yes, I think one of the ones that's been very public is the Egyptian Theater and their requests. There's other projects that we've had to put on hold due to the timing. We did anticipate that TIF III was going to be coming forward much earlier in the year than where we are right now, that have been waiting. So, we do have projects that we do anticipate being brought forward. However, keep in mind that those projects are also currently in an existing TIF district as well because of the overlap.
And if we go ahead with TIF III without essentially the other taxing bodies, what does that do in terms of, and maybe there isn't much impact, I don't know, in terms of our ongoing working relationship with those bodies?
If I can jump in on that one, I think, to one of the points that was made earlier, you know, these are being presented as separate action items, but they really are interconnected in a significant way. Our goal is to greatly increase the amount of communication and transparency that exists with the other taxing districts. And the TIF regulations that the council is contemplating that passed on first reading tonight, those encompass every request that we received and in fact exceed the requests that we received from the other taxing districts with respect to how the city manages TIF prospectively. And that's really what we're trying to focus on, is ensuring that we're having, we're acting at the highest level of fiduciary responsibility for those funds with respect to TIF III, if it's created, with respect to the closeout of TIF II, and with respect to the remaining years of TIF I.
Mike, I said I was going to, let's have some public comment before we continue our discussion, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, guys. I'm sorry, guys. Who wants to go? Steve Capitan or Mark Charvat? You guys fight over it.
Almost 25 years ago, I was up here engaging in a fight over TIF, so I go way back on this. But before I start, Mayor, thank you for identifying the Alderman moving and seconding the or, the motions. I'm sure Lynn appreciates that.
Lynn not only appreciates that, she prodded me to do that after the first meeting herself, so.
Well, that's what I like about you. You're, you're open enough not to hide that. Thank you, too.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
One thing I learned back then, when I, before the internet was available, I went to the law library to read the TIF law. And one thing I discovered that was at contrast with the way that the city staff and the city council talked about TIF was that, well, TIF district lasts 23 years. It just lasts 23 years. The law does not say that. The law says that the TIF district lasts as long as it takes to achieve the, the goals and to repay those borrowed monies that those goals incurred. Once that is achieved, the TIF district ends, not 23 years. 23 years is the statutory maximum. So I just thought I'd share that with you in terms of these, you know, these rules. By the way, I do appreciate that you're moving in this direction of establishing some regulations over this. I, I also appreciate that. But I just wanted to express my basic philosophical view about TIF districts. And related to that, what I had said up to this point, TIF districts that are large geographic areas with vague goals can end up lasting 23 years because the vague goals are never achieved. And in those circumstances, the potential is for the TIF funds to be burning a hole in the council's pocket, so to speak, because they are under pressure to do that, because if they don't spend the money, as Jason says, it becomes an automatic, they're forced into surplus. That can distort the use of the funds. The public also doesn't often understand that the use of the funds of TIF district dollars can only be used for specific purposes within the geographic area and not for basic city services. So when the city council spends the money on that, that project, the public often sees that and makes the comparison with basic city services and then goes, why are they spending the money on that? And they don't recognize the distinction. So I think public education is an important part, and the quarterly meetings, I think, will contribute toward that. And so what my mind, to my mind, is an ideal TIF district is something that the city did pass for the Old County Home Project, where if you all were, I don't know how many of you remember the Old County Home. That is the location where the Michaels, TJ Maxx, poor one is that development. What the city did in that case was to use the TIF money to prepare the site for private investment. Because for a private investor to have taken on that, that project, they would have had to tear down the, the Old County Home, remunerate an old dump site that had been used there, and put in the infrastructure for the stoplight. Those are the costs that the city incurred and the developers spent their own money to develop the project. And when that project was finished, the TIF was ended, long before the 23 years. To my mind, that is an ideal image of, of a TIF.
You're at three and a half minutes, Steve.
Okay. One quick question for, on the sales tax disclosure, we have a project, we did a TIF project for the Northern Plaza that involved a lot of different stores. Could the sales tax team be disclosed for the aggregation of those businesses so that individual businesses would not be disclosed? Same thing for the Michaels TJ Maxx development. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mark Charvat?
One notable absence is Alderman Jacobson, who unfortunately is not here to discuss this subject, though I appreciate his comments at the last meeting regarding TIF. I know in the past, Mayor, when Mr. Fanukin was absent from a meeting, you decided to postpone the vote on a particular item of interest to Mr. Fanukin. I would suggest if, especially if we have diverging views, that perhaps we delay this vote for the next meeting, perhaps. I want to point out a couple of things here. The city of DeKalb has actually admitted to misspending over $11 million on administrative costs when it comes to our previous TIF districts. I believe the costs were largely on the finance department salaries, and obviously, this is a clear violation of TIF rules. After getting caught with their hands in the cookie jar, the city, Mayor Smith, offered to reimburse the other taxing bodies if the taxing bodies would agree not to sue the city so that the city could form TIF III. Now, if, if, some of you follow social media, some of you don't, but even other elected members of other boards have referred to this as a bribe. It sure sounds like it to me. I believe these tactics are absolutely unethical. And the fact that the mayor went ahead with this without the city council affirming passing on this 11.25 million to the other taxing bodies is somewhat problematic, that he went out on his own and made this decision. The other taxing bodies have called out Mayor Smith, as has the state's attorney, who in a written letter to Mayor Smith, points out that the city of DeKalb has no substantiation that any of these funds have been used to accomplish the purposes related to furthering the purposes of TIF in the past. The city did not follow the act requirement of terminating corresponding sales tax portion of the central TIF area, TIF I, at the end of 2013. This is a matter of trust. The other taxing bodies do not trust the city of DeKalb. If you guys go ahead with TIF III, you're going at it alone. You do not have the blessing of the other taxing districts. And we're talking about working together and forming a happy union with the other taxing bodies. It's not going to happen. They don't trust the city of DeKalb based on what you've done with TIF I and TIF, uh, TIF II. As the mayor referred to another issue as doo-doo, this is doo-doo part doo here. We're doing it again, okay? It's, it's getting ridiculous. The, the letter goes on to state from the state's attorney that the city has actually utilized high-pressure techniques like other taxing bodies. The city of DeKalb is becoming a big bully to the other taxing districts. That does not sound right. We should not do anything with TIF III until we clear up the doo-doo part doo. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'll have some comments regarding the conversation I had today with Recamato and the conversation I had with Dean Frieders, but that is when we go to another item on the agenda. But I appreciate your input and your comments. Okay, Alderman Fagan.
All right, I've got a couple of things that I want to talk about. I was in a working group with the former acting city manager with the other taxing bodies, and I wish we would have had chapter 37 brought up at that time. We did not have anything like that. That goes back with trust. And it is our obligation to work with other government entities and come in somewhat of an agreement, whether it's for them, for us, for all of us. But we do have that obligation.
Absolutely.
And I don't believe in going something alone is, is the answer. Now, TIF III, I just want to be said that I am for TIF III. I am not against TIF III. But I just want to make sure that these things are not brought upon us with, and I don't believe that 11.3 million was, was misused. I mean, you look at some of these figures and you see some of these expenditures that we gave out to other taxing bodies, and what is really, what was it meant for TIF? I guess what I, I'd like to see is for us, again, I am for TIF III, I'd like to see it tabled, at least that we can get everything in line. I, we, like I said, I didn't have chapter 37 to work with, with the working group. If we could have had that, we could be talking about a different scenario now with, with the other taxing bodies. But if we can just table it for the time being and tweak a few things and start working back with the, with the other government entities. I'd like to hear what you've got to say with, with your conversation with the state's attorney. But, you know, to give out 11.2, 11.3 million dollars and that, that is something I'm not going to be for. But I just want to be able to see if we can table this for a short time. Earmark the items that we've got, possibilities are coming down the pipeline. That's one understanding that I've got that we do have to do.
That, that is correct. Because TIF II expires at the end of this year.
Right.
If we do not earmark the 2.87, that would be in excess of what we're statutorily required to declare surplus. It would automatically get added to the 5.4 and surplused out at the end of next year with the termination of TIF II. The challenge with that is earmarking that in a way that if you were to continue to work with the other taxing districts, it provides you the flexibility, if, if terms similar to the one with the surplus distribution are favorable, that you'd still have that option. If you earmark it towards a project, contractually obligate yourself to pay that out, it can become challenging. I think one of the other comments I'd like to make is in regards to chapter 37 is that chapter 37 is intended to be kind of an alternative to the IGA. It includes the same terms that were in the IGA. Because there isn't support from the other taxing districts that were party to, to that agreement, the purpose was to introduce this to the city's municipal code. Had the IGA been approved by all the taxing districts and we were coming back this evening for second reading and approval of that, it would have done it essentially the same thing. Those same provisions would have been included.
All right. So worst-case scenario, we earmark this, and we don't distribute the 11.2 or 11.3, which is fine with me, but everything's negotiable anyway. But at least we've got things that are earmarked that, what's the worst-case scenario? That we disperse some money on those earmarked accounts later on TIF III, and we, and we try to get a return on our investment? And that's the other thing about return on investment. And I understand exactly what Alderman Fager is saying, but we can get up here and talk all night about return on investment, but for the year and a half that I've been on city council, I have not heard one thing about return on investment. And it's always, you know, what can we do? You're talking about red and green, you know, because we can't talk about money and we can't talk about the return on investment. I don't, you, we can try to do whatever we want, but I don't think we're going to ever see this on the return on investment as much as we try.
So are you, are you suggesting, Pat, and correct, you correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, that we could table these five omnibus forms, which is the creation of TIF III today, without, and I realize the clock is running, but without adversely affecting the potential approval of these omnibus decisions based on what, what I think the JRB is going, what the state's attorney is asking us to do along with the JRB partners?
In regards to the timeframe.
Right.
The creation of TIF III is, has a longer out deadline than us need to determine the use of funds in TIF II. We have until the end of December to essentially designate or earmark any funds in TIF II that aren't statutorily required to be declared surplus. Otherwise, we essentially lose.
That we could do that without creating a TIF III?
That is correct. The, the point at which TIF III becomes challenging is when the final assessment for the next tax year is certified. If that was to happen and the city was not to have taken action to approve TIF III, we would essentially have to go back and redo the eligibility study.
Thank you. Alderman Verbi was first, and then Alderman Noriko.
Yeah, I echo other council members praising the extra measures that were included. I think that's a, a big step in the right direction, and I, like Alderman Fagan, want to be able to justify TIF III. There is potential with TIF III. But recently, we've demonstrated potential for errors in financial and budget reporting. So I agree, and will make that motion to table this until we can develop that consensus among our partners, have a little bit better take on our budgetary situation, the reality of our budgetary situation, and then certainly, I think, we'll be in a position to justify TIF III.
Alderman Noriko.
I have a question for Alderman Fagan.
Yes.
You indicated that you wanted to table.
As does Alderman Verbi.
Uh-huh. And, you know, to address some issues. What specifically do you want changed or modified or addressed or more detail?
Okay. And I'll repeat what I said up here is, I don't want to go alone on this. I, we have an obligation to work with the other government entities, the taxing districts.
Are they willing to work with us?
Well, you know, I think so. And like I said, if we, if we had chapter 37, if I was working with that, when I was in those working group, I think we'd have, we could have a different scenario that's going on. We're, we're showing a commitment. We're actually putting into a chapter here where it was, okay, we'll meet four times a year. And that's all that was. I didn't have that. I mean, I walked in and, I mean, I, I kind of feel like I was, was led the wrong direction on sometimes with going in on that, considering when you look at our budget and what was in our budget for this year, then until it was corrected. But I want to make sure that we are, we're working with, and like I said, it's our obligation to, to make sure that we're working with all these other government entities. I mean, they started, they started bailing on us when it was a domino effect. But if, like I said, if we could have had this before, yeah, then we could be talking a, a different scenario. And, and do I want, I, I just want to make sure it's in place and everything's done. And then I also want to make sure that the other government entities are online with us. They're all going public with us, saying, we, we're saying, no, the counties have been telling, the other taxing districts vote no on it. I, I don't want that. I mean, I, I.
Absolutely.
I mean, again, don't get me wrong, I am all for TIF III, but I want to go about it not as, and it's not being, but it feels like sometimes it's being shoved down the throat of us, and great, you know, it's November, end of November, but, you know, I just want to go about it the right way. You know, I don't want to go over and thumb my nose at anybody and say, we're going to go ahead and do this, so.
Alderman Fanukin.
Jason, a question. You mentioned a deadline on certified EAV. What's that deadline so we have an idea of what we're working with here?
I believe it's March. Ask Attorney Frieders to confirm that, the certification of EAVs for the following tax year.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Typically, it's in March. Okay. So then, my second question actually is to council. Frieders, there was a motion made, but there was no second, so I'm assuming that this point time has elapsed and that motion has died?
There was a second.
There was? Who seconded the motion that Mike made?
Oh, I'll, I'll second it.
Well.
No, we haven't. Yeah.
Is there, was there, there was no immediate second? That is my question.
Did we have a motion on a second, Lynn, on number two here?
No, no, no. I'm talking, Jerry, I think you're misunderstanding my question.
Yes, on the main motion, but if we're, if we're talking about a motion to table or to postpone, there hasn't actually been a formal motion made.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. I thought, I thought Mike had moved that. I thought Mike had moved that.
Alderman Verbic.
And I would also echo Alderman Fagan's point, and to Mr. Capitan's point of money burning a hole in our pocket. I believe that even though we may not be able to be very specific, that we should at least have a guideline regarding TIF investment. Yes, I hear a lot about return on investment, but our ability to borrow money right now is probably nonexistent. What if the heat dies in this building? What are our options if we can't borrow money? So I think we have to be careful with regard to saying, "We agree money will be spent on this, but not on that." If we truly have a facility need, just as the school district has used TIF monies for facility needs. So I do make a motion to table this, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded that we table the item number two here, which has the five omnibus sections. Any...
Question? What's the end date on this table? When will it be brought back?
For me, I'd like to say no later than March 1st.
I'll bring that closer to this. I'd rather see it done by the end of January. I think it can be done that way. But I'd like to see... Do we have to put a date on it?
Well, if you move to postpone, you could move to postpone to a time certain. Is that not true?
Yeah. So what the council has done historically would be either to set a date or to say when the mayor or the city manager believes that it's appropriate to bring it back. We could use either of those approaches.
Right. And, you know, and with this said, I'm not saying that if we can't get 100% participation, at least we get some, then we could go ahead and vote on this. And... But what I'm just saying is, we've got time. And again, why do we want to force this now when we do have some time to get other people on board?
Dean.
Just to clarify a couple issues that you've discussed. Alderman Finuchin, to your narrow point earlier, I think there was a motion to table made that wasn't seconded, and the council kind of moved past that. Alderman Fagan, to your point, even if the council lacks not to table this this evening, if the council says, "We feel TIF 3 should be established so the city can work out the ending projections for TIF 2," that wouldn't preclude the city from working with the other taxing districts. For example, the 2007 IGA that we have on TIF 1 was entered into during the term of TIF 1. And Alderman Verbic, to your point about facility needs or other expenses the city may have, the discussion that council's had about the three-year limit in TIF, that's going to be applicable to all of our TIFs. So I think for a number of years, there's been kind of a vague general discussion about TIF phase-out, and the council has said, you know, "We need to have a plan, we need to have projects identified, we need to have specific definable projects that are identified and that have funding allocated to them." Or that 36-month window will run in any of our TIFs, in TIF 1 and TIF 2, or if TIF 3 is created. So the city really lacks the ability to say, "Well, we may have a need here, or we may have a need there." The council, because of the way the TIF Act works, really needs to commit to, "This is what we're doing, this is what the projected cost of it is, and this is the timeline for getting it done." And that is what essentially locks up the funds and allows the city to keep them in the special tax allocation fund until that project is completed.
Thank you.
There is... Mike, Alderman Verbic, you have made a motion to table this. Would you consider withdrawing that motion and making a motion that we postpone this until after the first of the year?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion to table and asking Alderman Fagan to remove his second.
Yeah, I'll second. The postponing?
Yeah, or for tabling, and then I'll make a motion to postpone.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. I'll make a motion to postpone until after the first of the year, or as our mayor and staff see fit that we're ready to bring this back to council.
I'll second that.
Lynn, you're clear as to that motion and second?
I am, thank you.
Okay. And are we all clear to that? Roll call.
Yes.
Marquardt. Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Fager.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven-Eyed.
Motion to postpone passes. Thank you. Okay, now we get to ordinance number three. Ordinance 2018-0075, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2018 budget of the city of DeKalb, Illinois...
Excuse me, Mayor. I think we need to dispense with the main motion.
Or the original motion.
With the motion being postponed, I think that would resolve the main motion as well, that the item carries over until it's brought back after January 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, we're all set.
Okay, okay. So, number three on our agenda. Ordinance 2018-0075, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2018 budget of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement relating to tax increment financing. This is the second reading on a motion that passed on the November 13 meeting. I'd entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this ordinance on second reading. If you recall, this resulted in a 5-3 vote on November 13. That vote came to me, and I voted to approve. Had I voted not to approve, it would have been dead in the water. Let me explain why I voted yes that meeting. After having met with the joint review board initially, and after having worked with Pat Fagan, who represented us on some of the working groups on the JRB, it was my understanding that we had support, although not unanimous, on moving forward with the intergovernmental agreement. I respect Dave Jacobson and his pleading with us last time, if you recall, not to pass I don't think he said, "I beg of you," but he said something close to that. I respect our first word, Alderman, so much. But I felt, given what I knew at that time, and what I felt at that time, that by voting as I did, and virtually passing this on first reading, that we were moving in the right direction. Well, it was shortly thereafter that I learned that the county board, and after having met with Rick Amato, the DeKalb County State's Attorney, that they were not only not going to support the intergovernmental agreement, they were encouraging other agencies not to support the intergovernmental agreement. As Pat, you alluded to. I am in receipt of Rick Amato's letter sent November 13. I received it a few days later than that, and I'm just going to read a couple of things that meant a lot to me. He said, "We are, of course, aware that issues have been raised by taxing districts within the TIFs and have resulted in the city discussing and drafting an intergovernmental agreement between the affected taxing districts and the city. As we understand it, the agreement would entail the city declaring an approximately $11.250 million surplus from said TIF funds, and in exchange, obtain waivers for any possible misuse of funds during the prior years of administrative cost allocation. Such waivers..." I'm reading from Rick's letter to be, "...would apparently declare those administrative costs to no longer be questionable by the taxing bodies involved. This in exchange for releasing the funds that are currently held in surplus. There is the discussion of this outcome. It has been readily apparent that the city has utilized high-pressure and extremely short drafting deadlines to place the taxing districts in a part-or-none position, where the amount received would not contain any past funds that other districts allege they were to receive. Our office is not comfortable with this approach and the position it has placed everyone in." Rick goes on to say, "It is our recommendation and our request that the JRB meet and approve a forensic audit to be done on the multiple TIF districts found within the city of DeKalb. I look forward to hearing from you and all of the JRB in the coming days to determine how the collective seeks to move forward and address this situation." After having received that note, or that letter from Rick Amato, Dean Frieders sent to the council, along with a number of his views, and what I'm reading here has nothing to do with client privilege, I don't believe. Dean says, "The council is aware both the state's attorney and the county board are requesting that the city conduct a forensic audit of the city's historic TIF expenditures. We understand that request to relate predominantly to use of TIF to cover administrative costs incurred by the city. From a practical perspective, the city's records in that regard are limited, and thus a forensic audit would seem to be unlikely to produce a definitive result. Given the state's attorney's message, I will be meeting with him this afternoon," that was on the 19th, "to understand his request. If there is a desire by council to have a discussion on this item, staff is happy to facilitate it." I was very comfortable with meeting with Attorney Frieders. I met with him again this afternoon. I respect our state's attorney. I respect his letter. And had I had that letter on November 13, I would no longer have... I would have not voted yes in deference to Alderman Jacobson's vote. And I believe, Mike, you voted against it, and Tony, I think you voted against it. I respect you guys, you know that. I was doing the best that I thought we could. So, having that, we have second reading tonight. It's been moved and seconded. It's probably been made quite clear how I'm going to vote tonight. However, let me say this. When I was last speaking to Rick this afternoon, it must have been 3:00 or 3:30, Rick and I both agreed that what we want is the same thing. We want collaboration. We want cooperation. We want what the JRB has indicated they want. And despite the fact that some may contend that I was bribing folks, or as some would contend, that one of our taxing partners, namely the school district, is holding us hostage, I don't agree with either of those. I agree that we want to collaborate, and what we did tonight with Chapter 37, was that it, will help us along this way. So what I said to Rick, I said, "What I'd like to do is to have our attorney, Dean Frieders, and myself, and you, Rick Amato, coming together. Let's meet. We'll meet with him. In the interim, I want to see what some of the other JRB members have said, because they all received this same letter, and I really don't know what their response to he may have been. I have a pretty good guess of what the county said, but I just really don't know what the other JRB members may have said." So we're going to meet, and this will really, I think, play into what we're trying to do tonight. And that is taking a look at how we've administered TIF, how we feel we want to do that in a more collaborative, transparent way. And hopefully, if you get your wish, Alderman Fagan and Alderman Verbic, we will be in a position to be unanimous in the support of a program that I think still makes sense for this community. And I think the action that we took tonight says that in effect. So I will get off my soapbox, but I wanted to feel... I felt you wanted to know what... How I feel on the letter we received from the state's attorney, and how I feel, very candidly, what the other taxing districts have felt. Now, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second to the motion. This was approved by a 5 to 3 vote last time. We'll see what happens this time, but I'll open it up to any questions or comments. Roll call.
Marquardt.
No.
Fagan.
No.
Noriko.
No.
Verbic.
No.
Fager.
No.
Finuchin.
No.
Smith.
No. That ordinance fails on second reading. Moving along. Ordinance 2018-084, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2018 budget, and authorizing a declaration of surplus from Tax Increment Finance District 2. This is first reading, motion.
Still moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fager. Speaking to this item once again is our economic development planner, Jason Mitchnick.
Thank you, Mayor. As I previously stated, the intention of some of these alternative ordinances were in lieu of the IGA not having support from the other taxing districts. Budget amendment that would be before you with this specific ordinance would result in the $11.25 million surplus out of TIF 2 that was contemplated in that IGA. As I had mentioned, that amount was calculated based on the amount that the city has taken in general fund transfers from both TIF districts since the year 2000. In the year 2000, the TIF Act was amended to include new language, which was very specific, and the types of administrative costs that a municipality could declare. In regards to this amount, I've heard council repeatedly state that they believe that the amount is lower. One of the challenges with that, going back 20 years, is the documentation that the city has had, and that was intended, moving forward, to be included in the IGA and the enhanced reporting for the city to show specifically the administrative costs, and tying that almost essentially to how a consultant would provide invoices for billable hours, where we would look at what staff member was working on specific TIF-related projects, and tying that back to an hourly rate, and that's how we would determine the cost of administrative fees that would be charged to the TIF. As I stated, the challenge is, looking back over the last 20 years with the availability of records, we can't exactly quantify what the appropriate number was. And the intention of the $11.25 was to work in good faith with those taxing districts to say that this is the total amount that was taken, and declaring that as the surplus distribution. distribution. I take a little bit of concern that we've been accused of bribing with that $11.25. That was not at all the intention of working with, it really was to be collaborative with the other taxing districts, to look at how we could move past what's happened over the last 20 years, and look forward in how we were going to create a new TIF district and put in place provisions that were going to lead to enhanced transparency, and really be progressive in terms of how, how the city could administer TIFs moving forward. Providing council with the same options that were in, in the IGA were the intentions of this ordinance. So, Chapter 37 was those control measures that were in the IGA, and then this budget amendment was the surplus, the same surplus declaration that would have been included in that, in the IGA. If council is to vote no on this budget amendment and declaration of surplus, as it states in the backup, we would still be statutorily required to declare some surplus out of TIF II, and I had mentioned why. The biggest challenge at this point is the other $2.875 that would be left in fund balance in TIF II. And earmarking that, or designating that, as Attorney Frieders said, has to be a very specific project. Essentially, the city has to contractually obligate ourselves with the use of that funding. And quite frankly, I believe that is going to be extremely challenging for us to go into conversations with the other taxing districts in good faith if we are to earmark that. The challenge, and I'm stating this just because I want you all to be aware of, of the realities of decision you're making, is if you do not do anything and you wait till the end of, of next month, that $2.87 is automatically going to be declared surplus and cannot be designated towards a project. So, so you fully understand, this budget amendment would be a declaration of $11.25 million. If it is voted no or tabled to pass the end of the year, the city's ability to still declare that surplus is no longer going to be viable, and we will have to essentially go back to the drawing board. The, the budget that's been prepared assumes that this does not pass, so we have included, on the, I shouldn't say that, on the expenditure side, it assumes that that gets paid out. On the revenue side, we assumed the lower surplus distribution, just to be conservative. So, just so you're fully aware, we would, depending on the vote, have to possibly change some of the numbers in the budget.
If I can add one thing there?
Yeah.
So, this contemplates paying out the 11 and a quarter. We've already discussed the $5.4 million that's a part of that 11 and a quarter. If this isn't approved tonight, our next step, unless the council directs us otherwise, would be to try and look at those projects that are as close to shovel-ready as possible, and bring those in before the end of this year, so the council can consider obligating funds for specific projects. And that's going to be working with a list of different potential projects, and trying to get them to a point that we can have a development agreement that is contingent on zoning approvals and a host of other things that will be necessary to happen, but get them to a point that the council can give a thumbs up or thumbs down on individual projects. If this is not approved, and individual projects are not approved, and as Jason indicated, the ending default will be, if we get to the end of this year, the potential that a greater chunk of funding is declared as surplus out of TIF II at the end of this year.
Alderman Noriko.
Jason, who, you indicated that there were limited documents for a significant period of time in terms of the TIFs. And, but you were able to come up with an $11.25 million figure. Who actually calculated that, and then who reviewed that calculation?
If you go back to the, I believe it was the creation of TIF III backup memo, there was a, the amount of money that was distributed to the taxing districts. So, if you look at what the city's taken to its general fund since 2000, the $11.25 is all of the transfers that have happened to the general fund from both TIFs. In regards to how those numbers were put in there, it, that was included in every single one of the budgets that was approved by the city for the last 18 years.
Okay.
And if I can, I'm sorry.
So, basically, it was, you know, going back to each of those budgets and reviewing those transfers, that in fact, they took place and so forth.
The data source that I used was actually the annual reports for the TIF, so those were audited numbers-
Okay.
-from the previous year.
Okay.
To supplement that a little bit, so when we're talking about the records that the city has, if we look at some, if we look at the prevailing wage act, for example, it says if you're doing a, a project with public funds-
Mm-hmm.
-we're required to keep very detailed records down to what employee is working in what position, how many hours they worked, and what was their actual rate of pay for every minute that they worked on the public project.
Mm-hmm.
And we comply with that requirement. When you look at the TIF Act, the TIF Act doesn't have a specific standard in it saying, "Here's your record-keeping requirement for how you document project costs."
Mm-hmm.
So, all the things that we're building into development agreements now, that we're requiring the, the owner of a project to do, we're doing well in excess of what the TIF Act requires.
Mm-hmm.
What the city did do every year that it was required is they prepared an annual report that documented all the project costs.
Mm-hmm.
They shared that with all of the other taxing districts. They convened a joint review board meeting and provided it to the taxing districts.
Mm-hmm.
And it's our understanding that there hasn't historically been a lot of discussion by the JRB at those meetings. There hasn't been a lot of probing review of the annual reports, but that there wasn't greater discussion, that there wasn't greater review, doesn't necessarily mean that something unlawful happened, that the city prepared the annual report, complies with the minimum requirements of the TIF Act. And while we're talking about all these different kind of intersecting discussions and the past 20 years of expenditures, it's not entirely fair to throw the past 20 years of city administrations under the bus and say that they did something inappropriate, simply because what they did was comply with the minimum requirements of the TIF Act.
Mm-hmm.
There's no question that they did prepare the annual reports, those were properly certified, they were circulated to the other taxing districts, they were sent to the state. In that regard, the city did fully comply with the reporting requirements, the actual express financial reporting requirements that the TIF itself contemplates, the TIF Act. As we have these discussions, that fact seems to be lost in a lot of the public discussion of this topic, or a lot of the discussion from other taxing districts, that if there have been concerns about TIF expenditures, it's something that any of those districts could have raised at any point in time in the past 20 years. And there's been no allegation that the city failed in any way to meet the actual reporting requirements of the TIF Act itself.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Well, while this may remove any semblance of a bribe, it still flies in the face, does it not, Alderman Verbic, of what you and Alderman Jacobson were arguing for a couple of weeks ago? And that is, by declaring this a surplus, is not what you think that surplus should be used for. You feel it, I'm not, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I just want to understand this, because I, I really want to make sure that, well, I hope that, that we do the right thing on this particular first reading, but I suspect that this has some of the same pushback from those of you who feel that, that'll, that surplus should be used for projects and not for surplus to the other taxing bodies.
That's correct, and that's a pain point for me, is that I even attended a number of those JRB meetings in the past. I was not an alderman, had been a school board member, was interested in the data, and again, our partners have come to the table year in and year out. In fact, I know City Clerk Fizikas was representing at, at least one of the meetings. So, there was every opportunity, over the life of the TIF, to review our numbers. I would agree that even I spoke to elected officials back then, questioning the amount of transfer to administrative overhead from the TIF, but we were all aware of that information over the life of the TIF. I attended a few of those meetings, the documents were there, seemingly complete, so I'm not sure how much more could be audited, for example.
Alderman Fanouken.
Jason, a question, both you and Dean have mentioned that if we don't approve this, that there's certain dollar amounts that are going to be surplus anyway. What is that total dollar amount that would be surplus anyway if we do not pass this?
It would be the five, well, the $5.4 million is statutory required.
Okay.
So, if the city was not to take any action rather than here, it'd be an additional $2.87 that would be surplus at the end of next year.
So, we're, we're talking about eight-plus million anyway, so about a difference of $3 million roughly, that would not be surplus if we do not pass this. And what happens to that money, then?
The $11.25 contemplates a, a transfer out of TIF I to cover that full amount, so there is a portion of that funding in TIF, in TIF I. A large portion of it is actually previous budget amendments where we transferred funding from TIF II into TIF I to cover projects this year. So, we would have been reversing that transfer in order to cover that obligation. So, at this point, a portion of it has already been transferred from TIF II into TIF I to cover those projects. The $2.87 was in excess of that transfer.
Okay. But my, well, the question I'm asking is the difference between the $8.2 that could be automatically surplus if we don't pass it, and the $11.2. What happens to that $3 million?
That would, that would stay in TIF I currently.
And, and then would be available for projects.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Favor.
So, I'm, I'm against the approval of the $11.25 million transfer. As Alderman Fanouken just pointed out, I'd rather save the $3 million and put it to work in TIF I. It, it is kind of funny, because when we were approving some of the projects that are just now completing, people came up and asked, "How do I get at some of this city money? How do I get some of the city money?" And here we have $2.87 million that we want to spend by the end of the year, and we just can't find a project to spend it on in TIF II, which is kind of sad, but I would much rather keep the $3 million, put it to work in TIF I. If we have to surplus $8.27, we surplus $8.27, and, and not have any additional projects in TIF II, but I don't believe it's worth that extra $3 million to, I, I don't like the 11, 11 and a quarter.
Alderman Markwart.
To be fair, that $2.8, we have projects.
Yeah.
There are projects that were put on hold that we could have funded a long time ago, that have been put on hold by the JRB. And by trying to work out this intergovernmental agreement pending that, because if, this $2.8 would be needed to pay that. So, we have the projects. There's the Hotel on Fisk, there's the Egyptian Theater. You know, in two weeks, if everybody wanted to work 120 hours, we could get a development agreement ready in two weeks, and we could sign those, and we could spend that $2.8 and be done with it. So, it's not that there's not the projects, it's the fact that we're hung up in this, and I'm just, I'll say it, I really don't think that the other taxing bodies want another TIF. So, I, I hope that you guys can prove me wrong. I just have that feeling that the other taxing bodies really don't want another TIF. And it's one more roadblock, one more roadblock, and they don't want it. So, with that being said, part of me, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense, because three and four mostly go hand in hand as far as doing that, and we're going to have to come up with something different as far as, you know, declaring a 5.4, or coming up with projects for the 2.8, or just sitting on our hands and letting the money go. So, I would say that, you know, we're going to do the same thing with four that we did with three.
So, we must declare a surplus of 5.4 minimally.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion on the floor to authorize the declaration of surplus, and that surplus is the 11 point-
Correct. This ordinance contemplates the $11.25 million surplus.
Right, right. And if that is approved on first reading, it would then come back for second reading. If it is defeated, we would still have the surplus of 5.4 million.
Correct.
Which would be obligatory, right?
Yes, correct. So, what we would need to do then, before the end of the year, if this ordinance was to not be approved, is, as Dean said, find a way to designate those funds.
What's that, Jason?
We would have to designate those funds. The $2.87, we would have to find projects equal to $2.87 million and approve those contractually by the end of the year.
Which Alderman Markwart suggests that we might be able to do. Right? Did I put words in your mouth, Mike?
You did not.
Okay. Okay, good. Alderman Verbic? Or, excuse me, Alderman Favor.
I'm sorry.
Or on the $2.87, or not. If we don't, if we're not able to get it done by the end of the year, that'll also become surplus. But again, it's $3 million that we don't have to take out of TIF I, that we have used, we have projects in the works. And I'm, you know, I'd love to see projects get done with the $2.87. I'd love that. I'd love to use it for what it was meant for.
You have an extra 120 hours somewhere, Jason.
Absolutely.
Good, good. I love, I love, I love that sense, I love that can-do spirit. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the surplus of the $11.2, and we'll see where this takes us, first reading. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Markwart.
No.
Fagan.
No.
Noriko.
No.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
No.
Fanouken.
No.
Smith.
Motion fails. Number six. Ordinance 2018-086, authorizing the 218 levy and 2019 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes and special service areas of the city of DeKalb for the fiscal year 2019. This would be first reading. I need a motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Markwart. Speaking to this once again is Ray Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the ordinance before you contemplates the 2018 property tax levy and collection of taxes for fiscal year 19. If you recall, we've had several conversations over the course of the budget process this year in terms of the property tax levy. The city's fiscal policy really sets out that our property tax levy should pay the full amount of several necessary expenditures, those being the police and fire pensions, IMRF, social security. But as I'll remind you, over the course of the past several years, the levy has not kept up with the pace of those expenditures increasing. So, it's been the direction from council over the past few years to target the, the tax rate as opposed to levying for an actual dollar amount that covers the full cost of those expenditures. In, in doing so, I believe it's, it's the council's goal to maintain the amount that a homeowner, homeowner, for example, is, is paying on their property tax bill from year to year. So, over the past several months, we've gone through several iterations of this. The, the initial direction was to capture the full EAV growth that was projected for the city, which, based on the county's estimate, was about $4. city, which, based on the county's estimate, was about 4%. After we had that discussion and took that direction, it was learned that DeKalb Township in particular was applying a 4% multiplier to their properties, which, if you were to look at the assessed value of a home, would take... A home that was assessed at $150,000 last year, and it would now be $156,000. So council had another discussion, and that somewhat went against what I think you were trying to accomplish. So what we did then was we adjusted the numbers so that the rate you were targeting kept the actual property taxes paid by a homeowner flat. And in doing so, it actually lowered the tax rate. So what we brought before you tonight is two options. The first option would be your most recent direction, which levies to only capture the growth that is a result of new construction. And that results in about 2/10 of 1% in growth. So in the ordinance that you have in front of you, option number one contemplates a total extension of property taxes of $8,669,413. That includes your police and fire pension, your special service areas, your library levy, and any debt service after abatement, which in this case would just be the library debt service. The second option that you have in front of you takes us back to that initial direction where we would capture the full 4% of growth regardless of the multiplier that the township puts in. If we were to go by that option, we would be looking at a total extension of $8,916,324. The difference between the two is about $247,000. What I've done for you, if you call your attention to the slide on the screens, is I've tried to lay out for you what that all means in terms of an actual homeowner's property tax bill. So option number one, again, I gave you the $150,000 home value and the $156,000 home value because that's essentially the impact of that 4% multiplier that the township's going to put on. So all things being equal, if nothing has changed about the property, that multiplier takes the value from 150 to 156. So you can see the difference in the actual taxes paid. So if we stick to option one, using the same projected tax rate, you see a $0 increase when you include the multiplier. If you go to option number two, it results in a net $25 increase per property. So that kind of shows you, you know, based on your feedback, you're trying to keep the actual property tax paid by the homeowner flat from year to year, the differing options that you have in front of you and the impacts in terms of what the actual homeowner is So with that, I would entertain any questions that you have.
Any questions, comments? Alderman Fanouken?
So Ray, how does this compare to the black box? I think that's an important question to ask at this point.
Yeah, it's significantly lower. So again, when we put the black box notice into place, that contemplated an increase that was slightly above 6% in the total taxes... Total taxes that would be extended. So in the two scenarios you have in front of you, you're looking at a 2/10 of 1% or a 4% increase as opposed to the... I believe it came out to be about 6.4% that was put in the black box notice. So either one of these scenarios is lower than the black box.
Thank you.
So the black box was a ceiling?
Exactly. And we did that as a safety net.
Alderman Noriko?
I realize that we've looked at option number one as most reasonable as having the consensus of the council. I'm concerned that if we don't consider option two, we aren't... Once again, we aren't carefully or as carefully addressing the pension issues. It will require, you know, going with option one, we'll have to draw, you know, more dollars from the general fund to address pension liabilities. If we look at option two and, you know, the increase, the quote-unquote average homeowner would be paying an additional $25. If you spread that out over the course of the year, they're paying approximately an additional $2 and some change per month. It isn't politically expedient or wise for me to advocate for option two. But again, considering the pension liability issue, that's what I would advocate for.
Thank you.
Alderman Fanouken?
You know, I have to agree with Kate. And as Duane Brown mentioned earlier this evening, one of the things that we have been falling behind on is our pensions. And yes, it is a little bit more per month for each homeowner, property owner. But at the same time, we cannot ignore the ever-increasing pension dent that we're looking at. And even if we make a little bit of inroads into that as we move forward, I think that would be helpful. I don't think we can do what City of Sycamore is doing, an extra $100,000 at this point, but I think every little bit will help.
If I could give you one more number that puts that into a little bit of perspective, if you look at our financial policy in terms of what the property tax is supposed to fund, and that being your police and fire pensions, IMRF, and your FICA, under option number one, you are $1.33 million short of meeting that obligation. So any way you slice it...
We're still...
Yeah.
Alderman Markwart?
But to be clear, we have been making the payments to the pension for the fire and police of what our actuary has been saying that we're supposed to be paying. We're just not using the property tax to do so in that way. So this becomes part of the frustrating part for somebody who sits up here in the council because we have a dedicated source that's supposed to be used to pay that part. But we also don't want to tax anybody anymore in order to accomplish that. So it's like in business where you reach that tipping point where you can't raise your cost of your item anymore because then your actual revenue drops down because it all gets lumped in together. Because we get lumped in together with the other taxing bodies, and somebody who lives in the City of DeKalb has this high, high rate. And that's a part of all these other taxing bodies coming together that makes up that rate, not necessarily our 9%. So you've got 65% for the school district, you know. So the option was to just collect on the new growth, which means that city services will be affected because we have to pay for that pension part. And that pension part increases because we lowered our rate of return, because our obligation grows, because we have more people retiring. So it has a converse effect where all of a sudden now we have to cut things. We have to cut services to people in order to make up that difference. And it's a frustrating, frustrating issue to be a part of in many ways.
Yeah, we had a joint meeting with FAC last week. And, you know, obviously, whatever it is that we do here is going to play into that.
Right. In an ideal world, if everything was working wonderful in DeKalb, and you're going along, you'd say, "Yep, bingo. We raise it up, cover that cost." That would be the ideal world, wouldn't it? If the NIU population was back up to the way it was, if we had this employer, that employer... But that's the hard part of where we're at at this moment. And if I could wave a magic wand, I'd say, "Yep, property tax goes to what it is to cover this and everything else." And there'd be a bunch of new houses that were coming in. There'd be new businesses coming in left and right, and it would all get covered. But that's not where we're at.
Alderman Fanouken?
I'd like to offer amendment that we take option two on this ordinance.
Second.
So was the original motion, would that have been for option one then?
I believe that's how the ordinance reads, Jerry.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a... You're asking for an amendment?
I'm... I made a motion to amend to take option two instead of option one, yes.
Okay.
And I second.
Okay. So we'll vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comment before we vote on the amendment? The amendment then says that we're going to go to option two, which capturing the full EAV growth of 4%. Roll call.
Fagan?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Faver?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
No.
Smith?
No.
There were two i's.
Okay, so the motion to amend fails. Can we move on now to the original motion, which would be basically capturing only the new construction EAV growth of .0... Excuse me, 0.2%, which is our new construction?
I'd like to make a motion that we... For option one?
It's been moved already.
Oh, it's...
It was the original motion.
All right.
Yeah. Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven i.
Would you want a motion to wave second reading on this?
That would be at the pleasure of the council.
Do we need to do it now?
We hadn't anticipated bringing this back for second reading on December 10th.
Oh, okay. So there's no call for that? Okay. Okay. Item number seven, ordinance 2018-087, abating taxes levied for the corporate purposes of the City of DeKalb for the tax levy year 2018, bonds. This is first reading, motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Speaking to this is, once again, Ray Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as a follow-up to the property tax levy ordinance, it is required by statute that the city levy for certain debts and liabilities that the city incurs. So for example, debt that the city owes on general obligation bonds and things of that nature. Historically, the city abates all of those debt payments so that they're not passed on to the taxpayer. Those payments are funded through other city revenue sources. The one exception to that is currently the library expansion debt to which there is an annual debt service payment of $494,117. So that would be the one exception to the abatements. This ordinance contemplates abating all city debt service in the amount of... We currently have it listed as $3,449,105. But we came across some numbers today that there may need to be an adjustment to that. You know, when we did the black box, that number was somewhere in the neighborhood of 5.4 million, and that was done off of what the county lists our debt service as currently. But in doing some additional research, the number is lower than that. You want to come up here and help me explain that? So I'm going to do a quick introduction. So this is Rebecca Flakis. Rebecca is helping us on an interim basis in the finance department with some of our limited staffing. And she dove in in the course of two days, is helping with the property tax levy. So we looked into this a little bit today, and hopefully she can kind of give you the rundown on that.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for listening with me today. I just wanted to, you know, he had... Ray had mentioned the $3,448,105 as the total amount of the abatements as a number that we might be adjusting. I've gone through it. We're going to go back through the rest this week and come back to you with that, like he had stated. But originally, I believe that number should be okay, but we want to go back and look because it was brought to our attention. And what it was is on the county's website, they still have the 2,000 bonds and the 2,004 bonds that have been either refunded or otherwise are no longer existent. And that was included in the total number of the principal totals of total debt. Those are not included in that total abatement total, but we just want to go back and review everything one more time before we bring it for the second reading.
So what the county had is our debt service, and what we had are our debt services were significantly different?
Yes and no. They just had listed everything that we had, but it also didn't list that these numbers were abated. They were still showing the debt scheduled payments going out to '21, '22. But realistically, those bonds are gone. So you just had to go through the little nitty-gritty to get through it to see that those are not included in the actual totals. If you were to include them, they really abate to zero. So our total levy would have been accurate. But when you break it out, it does show that it's too much on both sides.
So if we abate either of those numbers, we're going to be well within the parameters of that black box...
Correct.
...notification? Okay.
Correct.
Alderman Verbic?
And thank you. I received your response about those numbers. And wish I could have gotten that to you sooner, but look forward to those corrections for next time.
Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So for purposes of this evening, we would ask you to essentially receive and file the ordinance on first reading with the understanding that whether or not the number is accurate and we need to make an adjustment for second reading, the important component is we will abate the full debt service of the city, with the exception of that library payment.
I am being given a primer on first reading versus receive and file between Alderman... Our Lynn Physikas, our city clerk, and Dean Frieders. Can we then say that we're receiving and filing this ordinance on first reading? Is that... Would that be the way to do this?
Yeah. Functionally, the terms are pretty much interchangeable.
Okay, good. Okay. Been moved and seconded? Roll call, please.
Faver?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven i.
Motion passes on first reading, thank you. Number eight, thank you, Ray, 2018-088, amending chapter 38, intoxicating liquors, section 38.24, powers of the liquor commissioner, as it pertains to providing a process for granting deviations from otherwise applicable distance setback requirements. This is first reading, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Markwart, and speaking to this item is Dean Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. Periodically, the council has discussions regarding the setback requirements applicable under the Illinois Liquor Control Act as the state law regulating the sale of liquor. That act has specific setbacks from hospitals, from schools, from different types of facilities. Over time, there have been many individuals that have wanted to open licensed establishments throughout the state that have run afoul of those setbacks, and the response of the state has historically been to entertain special purpose legislation to address one specific address. So if you look at this statute, it has a host of exemptions for specific parcels of land in different communities. Recently, the state took a different approach to the process and said that they were going to give the ability to grant waivers to local municipalities instead of holding that at the state level. What the change in the state law contemplates is the authority of the liquor commissioner as a local agent to make a determination to waive a setback requirement or not, after speaking with the mayor and looking at how our code is crafted with liquor licenses coming before the city council for consideration on, on first approval. What this contemplates is, if a licensee comes in and meets all of our other requirements other than an applicable setback, that would be referred to the liquor commissioner, the mayor. If the mayor chose to not approve that waiver request, the application would end at that point in time. If the mayor chose to recommend approval of it, then it would come to city council, and the city council would have the ability to vote up or vote down that license as you would any other new license. So this contemplates kind of a multi-step process for having local waivers as contemplated by the, the new state law.
So it gives a little bit more local flexibility. Would that be a honest, or a fair appraisal?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman, Fagan?
Have we got something down the pipeline that we need this? Or I don't understand why this is being brought up now.
We don't have anything currently pending that would require this. We don't have anything that we're currently aware of on the liquor front that would require this. It was a change in state law that was noted, and it was thought that it might be something that'd be useful to the council at some point in the future.
So, let's say we've got someone that's got a establishment, they wanna serve alcohol, and there's so many feet from the school district. Is that what we're talking about?
It could be a school, it could be a hospital, it could be a church. Churches are the ones that come up most frequently.
Right. So, so right now, we go by what the state of Illinois says?
We go by the baseline requirements in the state statute, yes.
Right. And if we do this, then we can say, well, we can adjust that by so many feet or whatever, and the, and the liquor commissioner, which would be the mayor, can decide on that, and then it can be brought to us and we can vote on it, right?
That's correct.
Is there a necessary reason that we need to do this? I mean, do we, do we wanna have, I mean, the only thing that I can see is getting closer to a school or a church or whatever, but I mean, is there a reason why we need to do this?
Well, interestingly, there are three options that we have, if you look at your background material. Number one, we may approve the ordinance, which would give us a little bit more flexibility. I have no problem with that. We may reject the ordinance, I guess I wouldn't have any problem with that. Or we may presently reject the ordinance, but request that reconsideration should, should an application become critical to a then pending license application. So we could bring it back on an individual basis, right, Dean?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Alderman Noriko?
I, I saw this ordinance as planning ahead. I mean, you put certain structures in place for potential future events, which, while it might not be, you know, today or tomorrow, it would certainly, you know, facilitate someone coming forward with a request if we already have the structure in place.
Alderman Markwart?
So, under the previous, before the state changed the act, say I wanted to put a establishment someplace close to the school, I could petition the state and go through the whole state thing, and they would put a itty-bitty little line item in there that said that I could be there, and it would go through the state process. So I would contact my state rep, my state senator, and go through that whole process. So in order to streamline that, and actually to relieve the state of some of that burden of all those people going, they're saying, hey, municipalities, you know kind of the flavor of what's going on in your place, you decide.
And that's what this ordinance says?
Correct.
It gives us a little bit greater flexibility.
So, essentially, if I wanted to put a thing over here, I would not have the option of going to the state in order to petition to get that under the new act, right?
Alderman.
There wouldn't be a need to go to the state.
Yeah, Alderman Fagan?
Right, because it's not a avenue that I could pursue.
I'm sorry.
I would have to go to the municipality.
If this, so, I guess hypothetically, the state law could still be changed, there's nothing in the state law that prohibits state-level exemptions, so I suppose hypothetically, someone could come to the local municipality, be rejected, and then go to the state and ask for relief, although it would seem unlikely that the state would help at that point.
Alderman Fagan?
What comes to mind is the property over here on South Forestry with the slot machines. Now, if we pass this, it says, yeah, we can, we can make our adjustments on whatever we need to do, we can have people coming back to us that have been turned down over the years, we can get ourselves a can of worms where, well, you let this person in, why can't you let me in here? Where we always adhere to the state of Illinois law, and I don't feel a reason for this, but that's me.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six i.
Motion is approved on first reading. Okay, item number nine, ordinance 2018-089, amending chapter 30, official comprehensive plan, section 30.01, adoption. By adopting the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan, this is first reading, motion please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Markwart, and speaking to this is Jason Mitchnick.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting during the committee of the whole, we presented the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan, so I won't go over too many details of the plan. I did wanna let council know that there was some slight modifications to the final document that were based on comments that were made at that meeting. One specifically was a paragraph or two was added to the executive summary based on comments that were received at the, the fourth community meeting about gentrification, so that, there are paragraphs that have been added to the plan about no development that would result in displacement, and, and that essentially is directing council or future councils as they, as they look at redevelopment, that they wouldn't be displacing residents, or at least developing strategies not to displace residents as they consider projects. Other than that, the, the ordinance would, if approved, would amend the city's comprehensive plan. This is a sub-area plan, so in addition to adopting new provisions, anything that would compete with this would also be removed, and this would supersede that. Because the task force has not met since their last meeting to approve the final minutes, approval of the minutes, the last task force meeting minutes are also included in this ordinance, I would like to mention that depending on council's wish in regards to the task force, further action is gonna be needed to take, either to disband or modify the task force, since that is an official body of the city. We are recommending the council discuss further whether or not to either completely disband the task force, or reduce it in size, or keep it as is. At this point, I would entertain any questions, otherwise I believe we did a pretty good job of, of going over the plan in totality at our last meeting. Last thing I'd like to say is just thank you to everybody that was involved. It's been a long process, and there was a lot of really great engagement, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to work with our community in putting this together.
Alderman Noriko?
I think this has been a wonderful project in terms of, you know, the community engagement, the specific projects that have come forward. My only concern is that the city, the council, commit to the project, that we make sure that the incoming city manager knows that the effort put behind this, and so that the city manager commits to seeing it through, hopefully figuring out a way, and I don't know how, but figuring out a way to commit staff time to following through overseeing projects. I want to see periodic reports to the council on, you know, what's happening in that area, and I want to encourage citizens to kind of hold our feet to the fire that, you know, we do make good on this beautiful plan, but it can't just be a beautiful plan.
I agree. One of the things that I can at least speak for, the commissions that I serve as a liaison to, the Economic Development Commission and the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, prior to tonight, have already started looking at the plan and trying to identify what areas of the plan, what projects of the plan align with their missions and their scopes.
Thank you.
So, and I, those are the two commissions. I know that other commissions, the city commissions, are also discussing the plan and how they can get involved with it, so I think that that's one of the best strategies that we can use to stay engaged, both from the staff side and commission side, but also the community.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Verbig?
I also applaud the plan, great work, Jason, and to everyone involved, terrific. I agree, we need to keep that plan active, both the progress, that could be a Gantt chart, or whatever we'd like to do, to set up monitoring that project and others. My only word of caution would be, we reference the general fund in the report. My suggestion would be, as we start to create funding models for these projects, to, I guess, try to avoid the general fund as a means of, of being able to come up with resources.
I think, very valid point. The intention of the plan in terms of the funding is to, to really kind of hint at or provide possible funding sources. I think the most critical component moving forward is, is gonna be looking at alternative and creative funding sources, such as grants that are available. I think one of the things that I mentioned during the presentation was also that that area is designated as an opportunity zone, which is going to be a really valuable tool for achieving the commercial and residential redevelopment components of the plan. I know that the Economic Development Commission has already started looking at some of the projects and how they can use the balance of their community foundation grant that they have to look at future projects. We worked with DCEO on a grant for, for the Community Education and Food Center, and if you'd like, we can come back at some point for a discussion about the opportunity zone and strategies that the city can take to look at incentivizing projects. The opportunity zone, while a powerful tool, isn't enough on its own to warrant redevelopment in some cases, so we can look at different strategies moving forward.
Alderman Fanouken?
You know, having been involved from the start, you know, we, we really went from ground zero on this right on up. You know, a lot of these projects are not gonna happen tomorrow, next week, next year, maybe not even into the next decade, but we've begun to make some progress. You know, we talked at the last meeting about the lighting improvements that have already been made. We've talked about, you know, the potential down the road for security cameras. We've talked with Marcus about the transportation improvements that have already been made, and steps that are being made for that to continue forward. Marcus met with some of the, the big employers out in the southeast side of town, and hopefully we'll be able to get them to provide some funding to have transportation from the Antiglen North neighborhood out to those big employers for a more secure way of people getting to work every day. So there's some things that are already happening that we just need to go ahead and feed off that momentum, and if we continue to even take baby steps in little things here and little things there, I think we can really improve that part of town, and we heard the numbers last week that it's about 20 to 25 percent of the population lives in Antiglen North, so we really need to tend to that, and it is part of the second ward, with the majority of being in the first ward, and go from there.
Alderman Markwart?
I got, I hadn't caught the part about the gentrification, and I can't say that word very well. And so I'm a little concerned by that. So say for instance, I win the Lotto game, and I wanna invest in DeKalb, and so I buy the old jungle strip mall thing there on Hillcrest. You remember the jungle?
I know, I know, right where you're talking about, sure.
Excellent.
We're hanging it in there, Mike.
And I, and I develop a plan for redevelopment that includes many of the things that are in this plan, but there's apartments up there, so I'm not allowed to displace those people, or I have to find another place for them to live.
The technical answer to that is that, I guess, if you look at this as a sub-area plan, it's a, it's a policy recommendation. There's nothing in the plan or the way that the ordinance has been written that would require that developer to do so. It's a policy recommendation that you look at fair and equitable housing and making sure that if, if you are going to redevelop an area, that there are other housing opportunities within the city for those residents to go look at. The TIP Act is very similar. With the eligibility study, we had to do a housing impact study in saying, if there was a project that was gonna result in displacement, is there adequate housing at the same price in, within the whole DeKalb market? The answer was yes. So, I think if you look at redevelopment and gentrification, it's, it's looking at the AGN area as a whole and redeveloping that and pushing up prices on purpose in an effort to essentially price out current residents, spot development and things like that. I think inevitably, if you look at redevelopment, you are gonna ultimately have some displacement. I think the intention of the way that this is written was really looking at the entire AGN area and not looking at this as a plan to, like I said, price people out of the market.
Okay. I think, once again, I have failed to note that one, we do have a, someone from the audience who would like to speak to this item, and Steve, Steve, you're gonna get your full nine minutes in tonight. Steve Capitaine.
Well, you know me, Mayor, I, I'll let you know if I see it slipping by. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, Alderman Fanouken, and Jacobson, I believe, were on the task force, is that correct? The consultant that the city hired, as well as the staff involvement in this, I thought it was, and the, I'm sorry, and the task force. I think it was well thought out, and there was a strong effort to involve the community affected, and so I, I wanted to state that at the outset. The, my main concern is over the issue of the... The, my main concern is over the issue of the establishment of, I believe, and Jason might be able to help me, an Economic Development Corp. Is that what you were calling it?
CDC.
A Community Development Corp. My concern about that is, is that I think that that's something we should be, as a community, be paying attention to how that process is carried out, and maybe look into other examples of how that other communities have brought that about, and apply the same kind of community involvement in working to create such an entity. And I think that's an important key here in this whole project accomplishing something. So, that's what I wanted to call attention to, and that we should, as a community, the city, the community, and the staff, everybody should be focused on. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, any further comments on the adoption of the Antiglade North Revitalization Plan? Jason, anything more?
Roll call.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven Eye.
Motion passes.
I'd like to move to approve and waive second reading. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven Eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number 10, Resolution 2018-154, authorizing the Finance Department to extend a line of credit to the Voluntary Action Center of DeKalb County from September 1, 2018 through September 30, 2018 via the City General Fund until grant funds are received for an additional $168,222.60 for a total line of credit not to exceed $542,826.82. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Fanouken, and Transit Manager Marcus Cox will address this item. Marcus.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Staff is here to request $168,222 to be extended to the Voluntary Action Center of DeKalb County in order to provide payment to VAC for transit services provided for September 1 through September 30 of this year. With the addition of the amount requested, the line of credit for VAC would extend to Since August, Transit staff has come before council on three separate occasions to request extensions on the VAC line of credit due to delayed payments from the Downstate Operating Assistance Program. These include payments for May, June, July, and August of this year. Debits incurred during this time totaled $921,469, with one credit received September 7th for $378,642, and is from the fourth quarter of the Dope State Fiscal Year, fourth quarter actual payments. Since April, staff has been working with the Illinois Department of Transportation to finalize our 2019 Dope application. Due to a revised application and application process, attempts to achieve a successful application in preparation for the start of the fiscal year on July 1 have been met with revisions and delays from both the Transit staff and the IDOT staff. On November 8, City Transit Grants Administrators Sabrina Kiekindall and myself, we went into Chicago and met with two representatives from IDOT. One was Zoe Keller, who is our project manager, along with the Bureau Chief of Operations for the Transit Division, John Morella, to discuss the specific hurdles that both sides have encountered. It helped us to better understand some of the difficulties that we've been going through, as well as understanding some of the frustrations that they've seen in getting through a completely revised application process. Upon our return, we made our final edits and submitted our sixth Dope revision to IDOT last Tuesday, November 20. At 2:30 this afternoon, we received notice of a state of award from IDOT informing us that our application had been accepted. We now must wait for the intergovernmental agreement to be created by IDOT. Once that is complete, the IGA will be completed, and we will bring that application, or excuse me, the intergovernmental agreement before council. At that time, we then or should see the first and second quarter payments from IDOT. These payments would make whole the line of credit provided to VAC and would support upcoming payments to VAC, as well as to TransDev Services Incorporated, who would become the fixed drought provider for the city on January 1. Our goal is to bring the IDOT IGA before council at the next meeting on December 10 for approval. In the interim, staff recommends that council approve the resolution of payment of services provided to VAC for the services from September 1 through September 30 for a total line of credit not to exceed $542,826. With that being said, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Any further discussion? Alderman Fanouken.
Marcus, with the following item on the agenda, where the county will become the fiscal agent, what impact will that have on the grants coming through? I mean, will I now be going through the county rather than through the city? And so, this type of action will become the responsibility of the county rather than the city?
I'm going to say that it's still going to be handled by the city, the transit portion, because that will still remain as part of the city.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Verbic.
Well, we're still not a bank, but I understand this situation. Hopefully, then, after our next meeting, we won't need to encounter this again.
Yes, sir. That is, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Markwart.
Yeah, it's really poor wording, I guess, for a line of credit, because it's really a bill that the city owes. And the city itself is waiting for the reimbursement from the state, from the dopes. Hey, did you get it?
I got it.
Very good. Theoretically.
Theoretically, yes.
Yeah. So, the line of credit thing is what throws everybody off, that we're, you know, financing this. It's really a bill that we owe, that we entered into the agreement, with the understanding that the assistance is going to come from the Illinois program.
Correct. Yeah. And we understand the frustration completely from both sides, and our objective is to not have this conversation again.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven Eye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Marcus.
Thank you.
Item number 11, Resolution 2018-155, authorizing an amendment cooperative agreement for the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study, changing the lead agency from the City of DeKalb to DeKalb County. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Favor. And speaking to this item is our Public Works Director, Tim Holdeman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The DSATs, or the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transit Study, is the name of our Metropolitan Planning Organization. That organization was required by federal statute to be formed when our urbanized area reached a population of 50,000, which occurred in 2003. The MPO, or DSATs, is responsible for regional planning in DeKalb, Sycamore, Cortland, and the surrounding county area, about a two-mile buffer around that, those municipalities. In 2003, the original cooperative agreement was created and signed by DeKalb-Sycamore, DeKalb County, NIU, and IDOT, and then Cortland was added later on. These are the six member agencies. The cooperative agreement establishes the purposes and duties of DSATs, its organization, its financial responsibilities, how the committee works, and the subcommittee structure, and it also defines the lead agency and the lead agency's responsibilities. And the city has served as the lead agency since the inception of DSATs. DSATs is overall governed by a policy committee, which is made up of representatives of the member organizations. There's nine total. City of DeKalb has three representatives, assigned by the mayor. City of Sycamore has two, and then DeKalb County, Cortland, NIU, and IDOT each have one. So, we have 33 percent of the votes. The amended cooperative agreement will maintain that structure. The only thing that it does is it allows DeKalb County to be the lead agency, and thereby supplying the director for the MPO. If this is approved, Brian Dixon, who is our only full-time MPO employee, would terminate his employment with the city, and the county intends to hire Brian as this agreement goes forward. Staff is recommending this action, which has been unanimously accepted by the policy committee, including Mayor Smith's proxy, as well as Alderman Fanouken, because the city has significantly reduced capacity to do this engineering planning. As you know, we have one city engineer, and it's all that he can do, just doing the city engineering function. Also, our increase in transit, our increased focus on transit, we will have more staff in the end dedicated to transit than we did when we had both of them in the old scenario. And then lastly, recognizing that the DeKalb County Highway Department already does a significant amount of regional transportation planning, and has the staff that would be necessary to support DSATs. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Fanouken.
Tim, that's a much question, but let me comment on this, too. So, really, part of what's going on here is that the city has taken over a greater role in the bus side of the operation. I'll just use that, the transit side. So, we're going to be overseeing, or Marcus is our transit director, and he's going to be working closely with the TransVAC and with the Husky Line to provide the bus service. The county is going to take over more of the other side of the operation that DSATs did, and that's actually road projects and things that we used to, when we had a city engineer of our own, was more heavily involved in. This way, the county's going to take the lead on that and really relieve us of a lot of that burden.
Yeah, the mayor of Sycamore, Kurt Lang, and myself sort of commiserate with one another in the sense that we've learned so much about transportation. But an excellent example, this DSATs, wouldn't you agree, Bill?
It is.
Really cooperation and collaboration, and we really, really get along very, very well with the county and the city of Sycamore and the other entities. So, very, very good. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Jerry, I think Mike had a...
Oh, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry. Alderman Markwart.
So, as the previous resolution, that was not something that was done, our agreement with Voluntary Action Center for that is not through DSATs.
That's correct. There's a different grant. It's a separate grant from the MPO grant. That's correct.
Okay, and then the consolidation part is also not through DSATs?
That's correct. We are the grant recipient. We have all the fiduciary responsibility for transit. With regard to transportation, we're only the fiscal agent. It just goes through us. And so, that's what the county's going to be doing.
Okay. I just wanted to make clear, because the federal funds that we're going to be applying for to do the transit part, I want to make sure that's coming through us and not through the county.
Yes, it is separate. It's very unusual for both the transit and the transportation planning to be under the umbrella of the MPO.
Okay.
Very unusual. And that's one of the reasons why we want to get it out.
Then I'm good.
Okay. Alderman Verbic.
So, we won't let the county try to be a bank.
Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven Eye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, on to three, a few items for new or unfinished business. The first item is the proposed 2019 FY 2019 budget, and once again, Ray Much will speak to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recognizing the hour that we're getting into, try to keep this pretty brief, but I wanted to take every opportunity to bring the budget discussion in front of you from now until the end of the year. If you recall, we had a joint meeting between the City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee last week, and during that discussion, we dove into where the budget gap sits today. A little bit of history, just for a reminder, over the summer, we came to the realization that there was a funding gap in the budget for FY 18 and FY 19. At that time, it sat at $1.68 million. Over the course of several months, both the FAC and the City Council went through a process to identify budget balancing measures, a number of which we received consensus on that should be incorporated into the FY 19 budget. And as of October, that had brought the funding gap down to about $240,000. Since that time, we've obviously uncovered some issues that were related both to the use of health insurance funds that were anticipated or had previously been transferred. And in addition, we took a closer look at some of the revenue projections that were built in to the five-year financial forecast, and now know some of those to be unrealistic at best. So, where we stand today is about a $1.8 million funding gap. One thing that's kind of important to keep in mind, and it was a point that was raised at the joint meeting on last Tuesday, is that if you look at the FY 19 budget as it stands today, it's essentially a balanced budget, okay? Within $100,000 or $200,000 or so, it's awfully close to a balanced budget. The real issue comes in to the fund balance and abiding by the fund balance policy that says we're supposed to maintain 25 percent of expenditures and reserves. And the major impacts there are a result of what are going to be large revenue misses for FY 18. So, in terms of discussion tonight, what I did is, I took what we heard during the joint meeting, and I wanted to just do a quick refresher on a couple of the things that we've done so far, and most importantly, that being the budget balancing measures that council had already given consensus on, when we met on October 16. So, it was one of the items that I added to your backup was a table that shows what those budget balancing measures are, and if you can call your attention to the screen. It shows the mix of both revenue increases and expenditure reductions that have already been built in to the proposed FY 19 budget. So, in terms of revenues, we had an increase in ambulance fees, the restructuring of the false fire alarm fee, the intercept ambulance fee. And then in terms of expenditure reductions, we go through a pretty extensive list on that, and we talked about the hiring of the assistant city manager at a mid-range salary, which would be a cost savings over the previous assistant manager, eliminating the human resources director, eliminating an administrative assistant in HR. There is a cost increase in the HR department in that we would increase a part-time generalist There is a cost increase in the HR department in that we would increase a part-time generalist to a full-time generalist. We talked about eliminating one management intern in the city manager's office. We went through an exhaustive list of line item reductions in the manager's office, legislative community development budgets as examples. We eliminated tuition reimbursement program, eliminated redundant or underutilized software in the IT department, reduced our technology replacement program for hardware. There were some cost savings that we realized for our secondary internet connection. And then finally, on this page, we eliminated one account technician position from the finance department. Moving through that list, we discussed the elimination of the deputy chief from the fire department, a part-time office associate from the fire department, and one commander from the police department that was anticipated to be a mid-year change to retraction, however, that's not a full-year move. One thing I need to call your attention to is number 19, adding two part-time record clerks positions. If you notice in the backup, I noted that that was sort of paired with an idea to move a full-time office associate in the police department over to community development as part of a broader package of how we might retool or rethink crime-free housing and inspection services. We've kind of stepped back from that because what we found was we were having a pretty broad policy discussion about what we want crime-free housing and inspection services to look like. And we found that having that discussion in the vacuum of this budget process was becoming increasingly more difficult. So while we could come back to that, for the time being, we thought that that would be a discussion for another time outside of the budget process itself. So if we were to not move the office associate from PD to community development, I've conferred with the chief that we in fact wouldn't hire additional records clerks at this time, so that $44,000 cost would come off the table. So we reduced some overtime for meeting security in the police department. We eliminated a street maintenance worker in public works. We made some adjustments to the funding splits for public works employees. Snow removal for arterial sidewalks and CBD sidewalks were eliminated. Those are contractual services. Reduced an administrative assistant hours in community development. We reduced municipal band funding by $10,000, eliminated Metro West and Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus funding. And we reduced DC CVB support by an amount of $10,000. The council also discussed several revenue increases, including a half percent increase in the hotel motel tax rate, as well as implementation of a self-storage facility use tax. So that's kind of where we stand today with the list that we've gone through to this point and what we've incorporated into the FY 19 budget. If we look at the additional proposals that were discussed, but we did not have consensus on, you see those on the slide now. There's a number of things in there that could be brought back for consideration at any point in time. I think at our next joint FAC city council meeting, which we're, at this moment, it would appear to be next Tuesday, December 4th, I would hope to have a more in-depth discussion about these items. As you can see, there's a number that, again, we've discussed previously, but for whatever reason, there didn't, there wasn't full support from the city council for a number of these. So I'd like to go into that discussion again with the city council and the FAC to have that discussion. To kind of wrap up the conversation this evening, what I like from the council is, we had discussion on a number of points last Tuesday evening, and we kind of came to a consensus that as we wind down this process of the FY 19 budget, there's a couple options on the table. One is obviously further expenditure reductions. The other is revenue increases. The third would be to adopt what is essentially a deficit budget, although the budget would be balanced, but we would eat into the fund balance and not abide by the fund balance policy, or some combination of those three. So tonight, I would entertain any questions that you have since the joint meeting, or accept any direction you have as to what additional items or information you want to see prior to the next joint meeting, understanding that as it stands now, it's been requested that we further explore a hiring freeze scenario, and that we have better, more accurate information on potential revenues in terms of sales tax, restaurant bar tax, and things of that nature. So that is what we'll bring forward at the next joint meeting, but if there are other things that you'd like to see, I'd be happy to hear those now.
Alderman Fanouken.
Ray, as it stands right now, without any additional reductions or tax increases, what's the impact on the general fund in terms of dollars? On the general fund reserve, I should say?
Yeah, so the 1.8 is essentially the gap that exists to bring the fund balance policy up to the 25 percent.
Okay. And I ask that to make that clear, that that's still where we need to go if we want to maintain that 25 percent fund balance. So that's what we have to look forward to here in next week.
Alderman Noriko.
One point that we had reached agreement on, but I've been doing some additional thinking, you know, frankly, partially because of emails I've gotten, as well as the presentation tonight, the visitors bureau, convention visitors bureau, the piece that, you know, if we reduce their funding by $10,000, then the state also reduces, you know, its contribution to them. So in effect, it's, you know, $20,000. Well, I'd like us to at least, you know, revisit, you know, their reduction. I realize then we have to come up with an additional $10,000. I mean, and I think, and I think there are some other areas that we could take a look at that. But I'm just, as I said, you know, that funding issue and the breadth of their activities.
Yeah, I think we're going to get a chance to not only take a look at some of these, and if you want to tweak them back or whatever, I mean, that's obviously your prerogative. I think what we really need to do is take a look at those few areas where we need a little bit more information, and you alluded that you're going to get that. And there are a couple of arenas in which the city council has a marked difference of opinion between what the finance advisory committee is recommending, okay? Finance advisory committee, I would say, is probably a little bit more aggressive towards the increase in revenue side. So we will certainly have that conversation if in fact it's next Tuesday or Wednesday Any other questions? Ray, I think we hear you loud and clear that, you know, we will be there and we'll try to, try to make the best moves we can for the city.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. 2019 street maintenance program is another new or unfinished business, and I'm going to ask city engineer Zach Gill to speak to this item. Zach?
Mr. Mayor, evening, council. With the streets, I'll just say upfront, I'm going to always shoot for brevity. I'm not being evasive. If you have questions, I can go on for hours about asphalt. I assume you don't want that. Looking at the streets for next year, I'm going to just start real briefly by funding source. When we're looking at using Fund 400, our local gas tax, what I targeted for that was, I coordinated with Brian Favor on some areas of water main replacement. They did have strong crossover with need from our pavement condition index, which is good. The way to do this provides a better product for the resident in the end, and it also provides cost savings between the two departments. So that's the big chunk of our Fund 400. I believe it's about 390 in there. We have a couple of little stragglers around that need some attention. Manning Drive, which if you're familiar, that's the entrance to Nestle down there off of 23. And then Wineberry, which is a subdivision, which apparently didn't quite get totally paved back in the day. And instead of leaving that partially finished area, we need to cover that up and protect that investment. Also, out of that fund, I was here a couple weeks ago, and we did the CDBG project. That is where the money to make up that about 130 to 160, wherever that ends up coming in shortfall from that federal money, will come out of that fund to those local streets. I also put in a city sidewalk plan I wanted to build up a little bit. Tim, let me do it. I said we have about 45,000 residents. Let's take a dollar for each of them, and we have beautiful streets. Let's make them walkable, where we've got some deficient areas and deteriorating areas. That was my plan for that fund. The other fund, MFT, we had a pretty big fund balance coming in, about three and a half million after 2017. I know there's been some big whacks taken out of that. What I did, though, was I projected everything we'll need out as far as commitments for planning and programming and design with the county through the tax sharing agreement, so on and so forth. Most importantly, two bridges, First and La Cinda we got coming up in '21 and '22, that are some big bites out of that apple. Even projecting all that and being as conservative, because I felt it was reasonable, at the end of 2023, we still had 661,000 in there. That would be enough if some unforeseen bridge came up that we wanted to program for '24, '25. So those numbers include this half million dollars that I wanted to spend on First Street. That's a huge area of need, both from the pavement condition index, and I think from anyone who's driven it, and it's an important street for us. It's about a million dollar job altogether. I'd like to attack the first half next year, see where that number really comes in. Asphalt prices have been good. We'll know what we're looking at then for the second half. If we have to piecemeal that, the second half with some Fund 400 and 20, 20 or so, we can figure that out. Our other obligation, if you could call it that, is Twombly Road. There's a rebuild going on out there that's in coordination with the county and the township. We're on the hook for about 750,000 over the next two years. We took the first 250,000 of that out of MFT as well. So that's how I, what I had to play with, how I played with it. I look for any feedback or approval.
Any thoughts on that? I know you've been hard at work on this, Zach, so, yeah, Alderman Favor.
So I just have a question on, like Wineberry.
Yes.
So I don't want to become business unfriendly, but so what do we do for the next subdivision that gets developed in DeKalb? Is there, do we, do we seek, you know, some bonds or something like that that they put up, that they can complete the project, or that they're going to complete the roads?
Yes, the, you'd need more teeth in the bond. Obviously, I wasn't here, this is quite a while ago, but I understand they provided a, they did provide, or at least showed proof of a bond that ultimately, obviously, ended up proving insufficient. And my understanding, not that we need to delve into it, was that, that same developer's also performing very well in good faith, literally, I mean, almost immediately concurrently with this bankruptcy and failure out there. So I think there was maybe just a little bit too much leniency there with the bonds, which again, sometimes you try to be friendly and keep things moving. So that would just be having a stiff upper lip when it comes to bonding requirements.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, Zach, stay right there, because we're going to ask you now to talk about the RFPs for specification, preparation, and construction inspection services for 2019 through 2021's street maintenance projects.
Okay, to get all this glorious work done, we obviously need some engineering. In talking with the public works director, he wanted to shoot for a three-year plan. I believe there was a two-year plan before, and we kind of switched horses midstream due to some issues. But again, I think we see value in establishing a relationship and riding that out with the three-year plan. We want to go out, we already have our, I think, six selected amongst those. I think the public works director and I have identified a few that we'd like to bring in and compare for this three-year program. And they would be responsible, obviously, for executing both the design and the construction engineering of our residential program through these three years.
Any questions? Okay, go for it. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
I think that's the end of our agenda, other than reports and communications, and I'd like to start with our second ward, Alderman, Bill Fanouken.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. You know, being in council is always interesting, to say the least, but I think the last, particularly the last couple of months, has been more interesting than usual. And I want to thank my colleagues for all the hard work that we're all doing together. I mean, and we still have a lot to do here between the budget. We have the city manager interviews coming up. And, you know, this certainly proves to us, and hopefully to the citizens, we're definitely not in this for the money. And then one of my other things that I participate in and support is the Salvation Army Food Pantry. And again, the radio station sponsoring their Freezing for Food Drive on December 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. It'll be, TD Ryan will be out there during daytime hours out in front of Hy-Vee, but if you can participate by bringing some nonparishable food items, some diapers, some formula, anything at all that you might think the food pantry could distribute it. I mentioned diapers, but also wipes, any of those things that I see go out of the pantry daily, so that they certainly can use the assistance. Thank you.
Alderman Mark Court?
No report.
Alderman Fagan?
I just want to thank Fire Chief Hicks again for 30 years of service. And anytime on a Monday night, we're here, and you miss us, and want to be here until 10:30, 11 o'clock, maybe midnight sometimes, please stop by.
Well, you know, Eric, when he walked in here tonight, he said, going to be about a five-hour meeting, and I think you asked me that at about 5:00, so we didn't disappoint Eric. Okay, Alderman Noriko.
With the snowfall, it reminds me that all of us homeowners, business owners, need to be careful about cleaning off our sidewalks so everybody can get around. And I found out my son can shovel, so I'll rent him out.
Alderman Verbic?
Thank you to the property owners in the sixth ward, business district, that have reached out to discuss the red bike litter. I would say, please be patient. I've been seeing a number of those getting picked up, but we will keep watching out for the red bike litter in the sixth ward.
Alderman Favor?
I just want to say thanks to the public works for the snow removal and getting out there and getting that taken care of. It was a lot of snow that came, so I appreciate their hard work.
Yeah, I think we all do. A couple of items that I have, believe it or not, one of our local treasures is Gary Mullis, and Gary has his 49th Annual Toy Drive, Toys for Tots, down at the Taylor Street Highrise this Sunday, December 2. The admission is one new unwrapped children's toy. If you know Gary, there's all kinds of country music and all that, so that's this Sunday at the Taylor Street Highrise. And I want to congratulate Gary for, once again, doing that now for 49 years. Just a very quick summation of where we are with the city manager search. I think we've had good publicity on this, so unless someone has not been reading, we did have 50 applications. We narrowed that down. It was narrowed down to 20 finalists by Heidi Voorhees from HR Gov. The city council did have the opportunity to take a look at those 20 finalists. We narrowed it down to six, and so we have six finalists for the city manager's spot for the city of DeKalb. On December 6, the council will interview those six finalists. Depending on whether we feel real good about one, two, three, four, five, or six, we will move that number on to a... move that number on to a number of committees, a citizens committee, an employees committee, and a department heads committee that will interview them. And hopefully by the end of that weekend, we will be in a position where we will have decided on who our next city manager is for the city of DeKalb. So that's where we are in the search, and I think that summarizes it, does it not, Ray? And I appreciate Pat Fagan getting involved early on in the process and HR, and I do appreciate, it's been a lot of work. But I'm sure that we're going to find a candidate who will help us lead this city forward. With that, let's go down the table here. Allyn Fazekas, anything that you have to report?
Just a couple of calendar items related to the municipal elections. So we've got ballot petitions will be accepted here from December 10th through the 17th for the consolidated election in the spring, wards 1, 3, 5, and 7 are for grabs, and ballot lottery, ballot placement lottery on the 19th.
Thank you, Allyn. City attorney Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to briefly join in the thanks that are being expressed for Chief Hicks tonight. I've had the opportunity to work with him for several years now, and it's rare that you work with someone who always incontrovertibly wants to do the right thing, who always is available, whether it's a fire in the middle of the night, or going out on a Friday night to a church to make sure that the food truck has a license. The impact that he has had in shaping the department here and shaping the culture of the city, and the impact that he has as a leader in the community and in the region, I mean, I can speak from personal experience, when you're a volunteer at a structure fire, at a big car accident, and you see DeKalb's fire engines roll up, how good that makes you feel to know that the professionals are coming and that there's backup there. Chief Hicks has been a mentor to many of our staff, and his role, his impact in your executive team, it's going to be big truths to fill, and we're really going to miss him.
Thank you, Dean. City manager, Ray Munch.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, it's already been mentioned, Public Works did a fantastic job last night with the snow removal efforts, but on top of that, all of our police and firefighters were out there, were very busy last night handling calls related to the emergencies or otherwise. And so from all of our three major city service providers, Public Works, police and fire, everybody did a great job last night, and I think the citizens should be very proud of their efforts.
Yeah, kudos to all. Our police chief, Gene Lowery.
I just have to say, Eric's been a great public safety partner, probably the best I've had on the fire service side in my nearly 40 years of service, so we're all going to miss him. I hope every person in the fire department knows how much of an advocate he has been for them, and I hope every citizen in this community knows how much of an advocate he's been for them as well.
Thanks, Eric.
Eric.
All right, thank you, Eric, for the kind words. I want to talk about the warming centers real quick here. I know we've had some bad weather real early in the year. Normally, we put the warming centers out about the second week of December, but I'm going to tell you where they're at right now. DeKalb Senior Center, DeKalb Park District Haze Gym, DeKalb Public Library, and those are all open during business hours. And then we have whole pavements, which is no turnaway shelter, and we can get them in pretty much any time of the day in severe weather. So you just have to call the fire department, they need to get one of these lined up. So I can assure you, the fire department is in good hands in the future. We've got some great internal candidates, and I hope you guys would choose one of them for the position. So thank you.
Yeah, and if we haven't done so already, I would hope that we would put those warming center things on our website, and Mayor perhaps get a news release out to that effect so that we let those folks know that if people are in need of heat, they know where to go.
Yeah, it's currently on the website, and I actually even put that out and talked with Kelsey about this.
Wonderful, great. Thank you, Eric. Bob Miller.
I have no report.
Dan Olson.
No report.
Tim Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take just a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about the blizzard of November 2018. It really started on Saturday for us, when we had to convert the eight dump trucks that we've been using for loose leaf collection into snow-ready vehicles. That means adding the plows and adding the salt spreaders and removing all the leaf collection equipment. It took several men, several hours on Saturday, working overtime to do that. We have 15 men that are assigned to 15 different routes. We have 16 dump trucks. So everything that we have, less one dump truck, is on the street when there's a snow emergency. And this was a snow emergency. On Sunday, we called the guys in about 1:30, and we got salt down right away everywhere, because we knew that that rain was going to freeze and that that would create a real hazard.
Yeah.
As it turned out, there was a window between about 4 and 6 before it really started coming down. When it comes down like that, we have one objective, and that's to keep the roads passable. We do that by plowing and salting intersections. This snow was so wet, and then it got cold, that it was too much to try to keep it melted. The salt that we bought in 2019 will be about 150% more than the salt we have. This is the first event, and we did not want to extend ourselves in terms of using salt. That's why some of the roads are bumpy. Remember, next Monday, it'll all be gone. It's November. The forecast is 40, 50 degrees. This is not going to stick around all winter. This is not a January or February event. So I stand beside my management team that made these decisions with extraordinary amount of insight and experience that goes behind it. So by 7:00, 8:00 this morning, roads were passable. Everybody was getting where they needed to go, myself included. And so kudos to those guys who went out there and who spent about 24 hours behind those trucks, and then all their support. It's a job that is a thankless job. But we here know what it means, and so I certainly appreciate those calls and those emails that I get, and what I hear tonight about all that it means to the city with regard to loose leaf collection. We will not be doing loose leaf collection tomorrow. What happens on Wednesday? I don't have a crystal ball. But we recognize that we only got two cycles done this year, and there's a lot of people with leaves in the street, on the parkway. We know that. We're going to do the best that we can to manage the threat of another snowstorm while we're also trying to pick up leaves, recognizing that once it melts, the leaves will be wet; once it freezes, the leaves will be stuck together, and it'll be a mess. But that's not Public Works' fault. We are the answer to the problem. We're not the problem. So I know that I'm speaking, you know, kind of preaching to the choir here, but I do want our residents to understand the dedication that we have serving the residents of DeKalb. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Mark Thorson.
No report.
If there's nothing else for the good of the cause, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Norrico, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. So move.